Good evening. I'd like to call and order the Select Board meeting for Monday, June 9, 2025. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format consistent with provisions in state law for remote participation in public meetings. Before we begin, please note the following: This meeting is being conducted in the Select Board chambers and over Zoom. It is being recorded and simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. People wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do this on the town's website. People participating either in person or by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others, and that if you wish to participate, we ask that you provide your full name and place of residence in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Both Zoom participants in person watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials found on the town's website. Specifically, click on "Select Board Agendas and Minutes" page. If technical difficulties sever the remote connection to one or more participants and efforts to reconnect within a reasonable period of time fail, the in-person meeting will continue with the discretion of the chair, provided that a quorum of the board is physically present. Zoom participants are encouraged to retain the phone number provided in your confirmation email for backup audio connection to the meeting. There will be opportunities for public to comment at tonight's meeting. We have a Citizens' Open Forum and, I believe, the Washington Street Agenda Item. If you are attending by Zoom and want to participate, please raise your hand in Zoom when I announce that public comments is open. If you're not sure how to raise your hand in Zoom, now would be an excellent time to Google on how to do so. Let's see how much of the town's business we can get done tonight. Agenda Item 2 is FY 2025 Third Quarter Financial Report. Mr. Feeney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we could invite our Controller, Ida Cody, to the microphone for a brief presentation.
Good evening. Ida Cody, Town Controller. I'm here to present the year-to-date budget report for the fiscal year 25 for the period ended March 31, 2025. The burn rate for this reporting period should be at 75%, and we are, for both expense and revenue, at about 79% - actual collection and expenditures. I'm going to focus on a few hot items on the expense side. Most items are at 75%. Overall expenditures are at 81%, and this includes the purchase orders, as well as some items that are paid in full in the first quarter of the fiscal year. Postage is at 94%, and this is because we had a retirement. Anthony retired this year. We had his buyout, and we should be good to close in black fiscal year 25. Facilities burning hot were at 93%, and you probably know it's because the high school and the DPW, they're now heated electric. We also have the IT server in the DPW building, and the air conditioning room has to be on 24/7, and that's electric. The fire department is at 80%, and we are preparing a reserve fund transfer because we had five retirements this year. We also prepare a reserve fund transfer for the facilities in the amount of $144,000, and for the fire department, $240,000. The transfers and the pensions are spent 100% because these transfers take place in the first quarter of the fiscal year. The articles are at 65%. I'm not going to spend much time on this because they have two years to be spent. As I said, revenue is at 79%, and I will highlight a few items that you'll probably be interested to hear how they're doing and where we stand with the collection. Motor vehicle excise is at 103%, and so we've already exceeded the target, but that is because we estimated conservative of $4.8 million, and the actual commitment, the value of the commitment, came from the RMV at $5.8 million. We've increased slightly the projection for fiscal year '26 by $100,000. The other excise taxes are 106%, and this is a combination of increased costs for the meals and the hotel. Also, estimated conservative, we estimated conservative this item. The meals are at 110%, and we increased it in fiscal year '26 by 20%. Hotel really came back after COVID. It's at 134,000, 134%. And marijuana has been declining for the past two years, even though we lowered the projection in fiscal year '25 by 50%, further in '26 by 20%, by 20,000. Sorry, we lowered by 50,000, not percent. The fees are at 90%. It's mostly from the parking because we improved the collection process, and also from the ambulance fees, we increased the fees, and we also do a lot of in-house calls. Rentals are 97%, and we renewed all the leases this year to better reflect the fair market value and also the costs associated with maintenance of those buildings. Permits are at 142%, mostly from the building, 126%, and wire permits, 257%. The wires are mostly from the EV charges and the solar panels. Fines are almost double, 190%, but they had a small denominator. We're talking an estimate of $10,000, and we've collected $20,000. It's mostly from the court fines, moving violations, and also some fees at the library. We waived all the late fees, and we don't have an estimate. We only charge them if they lose books and they don't return them. Interest is at 700%. We were lucky to still have some money from ARPA, DPW, and the high school, but the cash is drying up now, so, and we don't know how the rates are going to be next year, but we enjoy the extra free cash here. And miscellaneous revenue is a catch-all: various reimbursements from the prior year, election reimbursements, legal settlements, fringe benefits. And that's it for the general fund. And for the enterprise fund, all funds are tracking as they should for this reporting period. Counsel on Aging, the revenue is fully collected at 99%, but that's because we also subsidize it, and the subsidy is posted in July. Rec and rink, they're highly seasonable and seasonal, and the recreation revenue is at 120%. However, this includes some pilot programs which will be reclassified into the revolving fund. And per your request, there are three other major funds listed on the reports, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I have a question. Thank you, Ms. Cody, as usual. That's a great summary. Through you to the Town Manager. So, Mr. Town Manager, I noticed that we're now kind of, are we fully on for the facilities, expected facilities expenses for the electricity for the two, for the high school and the DPW? Are we still in a place where there may be, now everything's online, it's going to be electrified, and I guess, how stable are we with that, with that increase?
So, at this point, everything is online, except for some of the solar installations that are going to offset some of those costs. So, the solar array at the DPW building is not yet online, and we expect that will provide a significant offset to the costs. And similarly, there are still some solar arrays at the high school from the newer sections that have yet to be turned on, as well as the solar parking arrays that are going to be constructed as well. So, every, the expenses are online, but the offsets are not yet online.
That's good news. And does the town have the benefit of net metering that's similar to how homeowners do with excess generation?
Yes. Our newer installations are behind the meter, so we can use it onsite, but we would have the benefit of net metering as well.
Great. Thank you. And my other thing is just a comment to thank you for, and your team, for the increase in parking fine revenues. Not only for the revenues, but I think for the deterrence that it offers that, you know, people know maybe, hopefully will think seriously about paying their old parking tickets now that we're actually, as I understand it, going back to the registry and pinging them on their record.
That is correct. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Cody, for the presentation again this evening. And just a question on the Medicaid collections you had mentioned. This is due to a timing issue, but I mean, I think we're all concerned about the future of Medicaid, at least in the short term. And I just want to be sure, we're current on the billing? It's just a matter of waiting on the reimbursement? Is that your understanding?
It is my understanding that PCG is doing quarterly billing, but it takes a while to be reimbursed, and you will see some years. The collection is at 150%, and in others, we don't hit the 100%. So, it's highly, it fluctuates a lot. But it's, I'm hoping that is, it is up to date. It's just the reimbursement that takes a long time. The consultant gathers the data and submits it to the government, and we get it when we get it.
Okay. And just a question. You had mentioned in your memo, there's going to be two requests for reserve fund transfers, which is the FinCom Reserve Fund, and by my count, that's just under $400,000. But at least through the third quarter, that reserve fund was intact at roughly $2 million. Is that, is that right? There hasn't been any ask on that, or, Mr. Feeney?
There was an ask earlier this year, Mr. De Corsi, to support the DPW construction project.
Okay. Oh, that's right. Okay. All right. But this $400,000, the reserve fund is not in danger of being fully exhausted as a result of this?
Nowhere near close to being exhausted.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to receive by Mr. Helmut and seconded by Mr. Hurd. And I want to thank you, Ms. Cody and Mr. Feeney. I know, in anticipation of Friday's long-range planning meeting, it's good, at least for all of us, including Mr. De Corsi and I, to have this now fresh on our mind for what we'll be discussing on Friday morning. So, on a motion by Mr. Helmut to receive, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous vote. Good to see you.
Thank you.
We will now go to Sims Memorial Fund update, and we have the Chair of the Sims Memorial Fund.
Hello, everybody.
Original Town Council for me, John Marr.
I have an uncontrollable urge to genuflect when I come.
Control it.
Please. Believe it or not, it's been 17 years since I worked for the town, and people still come up to me and say, you know, "What do you miss about it?" I say, "I don't miss anything except going to the Board of Select's meetings." I really miss that. I sit up at the kit on Monday nights, and I look disconsolately down here and say, "Maybe they'll call me sometime." I'm alive on the beach in Truro. And one day, I got, it was an uncontrollable urge to come back up here, and I came, wet bathing suit and all. It was one of those days that I had a bathing suit on. A bunch of info, Jim.
Perhaps way too much.
Any event, I circle the block here. Look here, I wonder what's on the consent agenda. I mean, you're the biggest, highest elected body in the town. I mean, you people are like the big cheeses of the town. I mean, I was in the Stop and Shop the other day, and I heard these two women talking, and they say, it was a Monday, and they were saying, you know, "There's a board meeting tonight." What board? It was the big cheese board. I thought they were talking about charcuterie for a while. But in any event, here I am on behalf of the Sims Memorial Fund. With me tonight are members of the Board, Patsey Kramer, Alan Reedy, and Jackie Keshin. Also here is Dick Keshin, who was longtime counsel and was instrumental in assisting the Board over the years. Sims Hospital, as you know, was up on Sims Hill, on Hospital Hill for many years. In late 80s and 19, in the 1990s, it kind of fell on hard times, like a lot of community hospitals, in reduction of Medicaid reimbursements, and folks were going into the teaching hospitals in Boston. And like a lot of community hospitals, it really couldn't make it. And in 1994, they filed with the Supreme Judicial Court, who has original jurisdiction over these matters, a petition for dissolution. During the process, Leahy Clinic became involved in acquiring Sims Hospital, and did, and they assisted in that dissolution, and they took charge of all the real estate, and there was, in fact, some excess Medicare reimbursements left over in the amount of about $3 million. And Leahy thought that they would scoop those funds and go merrily on their way up to Burlington. And this board, led by then Charlie Lyons, said, "That money is Arlington money, and we don't want that to leave the town." After long, and as they say in diplomatic circles, frank and businesslike exchanges with Leahy, this board ordered the then crack legal department to intervene on that matter. And being led by the Town Manager at the time, Don Marquis, and this board, we were able to persuade Leahy to essentially split the blanket. They would keep a million, we would get a million, and a million would be in their reserve fund for, to administer pension benefits for retired Sims employees and to maintain medical records. So, years went by, that money, the reserve fund, that $1 million, was not really expended. And I tried for a number of years to persuade Leahy to split the money again. My failure in that regard can only be described as spectacular. However, after a number of years, it occurred to me to approach Nora Mann. Nora was the Deputy Chief of the Charities Division of the Attorney General's Office, someone who now we have the great pleasure of having on our board now. And she took the bull by the horns and really organized another effort, took a run at Leahy, worked with the Attorney General's Office. We returned to the Supreme Judicial Court. Everybody was on board, and the long and the short of it is, that million dollars in the reserve fund was split again. So, rather than having $800,000 to, in our principal, we now have 1.3. And the reason I'm here tonight is, along with my board colleagues, is to tell the Board of Select about that, but more importantly, to raise our profile and get the word out to the community. Now, the folks that we've been giving these funds to, we give a conservative amount of 5% each year. It's about $40,000, $45,000, but now we can increase that to about $65,000. Over the years, we have had increased, you know, requests, and far exceeding the amount of money that we give out each year. Now, I wouldn't say we're flush, but we do have a considerable amount more. The kinds of people that we give, the kinds of entities that we give to, it must be nonprofits, Boys and Girls Club, Counsel on Aging for Medical Rides, the School Department, I said, Youth Consulting Center, Arlington Eats, Food Link. So, now we have more money, and we're anxious to get the word out. We're trying to raise our profile as much as possible. I hope to be on ACMI. Alan has written a blog for Arlington online, and we're here to field your questions and to encourage people out there. I mean, I'm the contact person. We all collegially make decisions, but I am at least the contact person to get in touch with me, to get the information sheet and get the application. The application period is now open. It's open until June 30. So, if folks are out there and they have a health or a medical entity, again, a nonprofit, it can be a town, Arlington, governmental entity, Counsel on Aging, Youth Consulting Center, anybody else out there who hears this, please get in touch with me. Contact information can go through the Manager's Office, to Ashley has by, contact information. If anybody has a pen in hand right now, my email is johnnycape, J-O-H-N-Y, C-A-P-E, at hotmail.com, and we look forward to hearing from everybody out there, and glad to answer any questions from the big cheeses here.
Thank you. Tough act to follow. Any questions, comments? Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Marr, thank you for coming back. It's great to see you, and I'm not sure Mr. Cunningham feels the same way about missing meetings when he leaves every Monday. It's good to see over the years that you have felt that way. And congratulations to you and the Board members. It's great to see you all here in terms of being able to increase the portfolio and the great work of Attorney Mann, because as you look at what you're able to distribute here, it's all organizations that we're familiar with, and it's really wonderful. And I've said this before, but Sims Memorial Fund, Sims Hospital is a special place to me because I was born there. So, it's great to see that this memorial fund continuing. Thank you.
I've got a text asking for your email, so the message getting out. Is that a motion to receive?
Yeah, I'll move receipt.
Mr. De Corsi, seconded by Mr. Diggins. And Mr. Diggins?
Thank you. Two questions. One is, what kind of cheese would I be?
I'm sorry?
What kind of cheese would I be? Anything but Swiss, right? What kind of cheese would I be?
You have to name us all cheese. I'll be the plain craft wrapped individually.
Well, you're an august body, Assembly of August Panjandrum, which is another word I used to, and I'm sure you all know what that means. It's a very laudatory term, panjandrum, and you certainly are that. So...
Okay. All right. Second question is, so what is the future of the fund?
I'm sorry?
What is the future of the fund?
The what of the fund?
The future.
Future?
The future. So, how long will this fund?
It, I mean, we only give 5% a year, so we hope it will be infinite. So, as long as the money is there, and we are careful, we really like to spend only the income that we get. Sometimes it's a little more, sometimes it's a little less. But now with the additional $500,000, we, you know, we, I think our financial integrity is, you know, is hopefully going to be maintained indefinitely.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have two questions. Right now, you're getting the word out, and you're asking people to please apply. Is there a end date to which they need to apply, or is this something?
June 30.
June 30 of this year and every year?
It varies. When I can get the applications out, we do everything, obviously electronically. It varies from year to year. But it is June 30 this year. If something comes in a little later, I mean, we're very, you know, flexible on that, but June 30 is the date that we like to get all the applications in. We don't, you know, for each grantee, it's generally not a lot of money, but it's made a major difference. It's usually between $3,000 and $5,000 for each recipient, and that makes, can make a big difference. Like, we've had sponsored a couple of seminars down to Boys and Girls Club for trying to appeal to diverse youth. We expanded the shelf capacity of Arlington Heats. You only need about $4,000 and they have more storage capacity. We, for Food Link, we, you know, we bought them a software program that coordinate their deliveries and receipt of food. So, it can make a difference, even though they're relatively small amounts.
Mr. Hurd?
Would a, is the definition of medical and health related, is that more specifically defined somewhere, or is it?
I'm sorry. No, it's very broadly defined. It's what we decide, medical or health uses.
With like a youth sports organization?
I'm sorry?
With like a youth sports organization be medical or health?
That would be reach. We encourage people to apply, and then we talk to them individually and say whether or not we think it's a, under the SJC decision, we are constrained. It is medical or health-related. So, I mean, you can make an argument that sports is health-related, I guess. So, we're, we broadly define it, but there are, got to be some limitations.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your work. What's the structure of this? Are you a separate 501(c)(3) organization?
We are a 501(c)(3). Dick Keshin set that up.
Great.
A number of years ago. It's a Chapter 180 charitable corporation under the Commonwealth laws, a 501(c)(3). So, people who give money to us, if they were, you know, they're private entities, we don't really have many private entities, but if it's a nonprofit, you know, we accept there, and there are some tax liabilities somewhere out there. But if they give money to us, or if we give money to them, that's tax-free.
Great. Thank you. My only other comment is that I'm glad that I wasn't named Swiss Cheese, because it is notoriously full of holes.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. And seeing no further comments on a motion to receive by Mr. De Corsi, seconded by Mr. Diggins, and our thanks to Mr. Marr.
And my colleagues.
Ms. Keshin, Mr. Reedy, Ms. Kramer.
Mr. Reedy and Nora Mann.
Nora Mann especially. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Good to see you all. We will now go to Consent Agenda. Minutes of the meeting, May 19, May 28, 2025. Summer Concert Series, Whittamore Park, on June 25, July 7, 9, 16, 23, 30. Beth Locke, Executive Director, Arlington Chamber of Commerce. Porch Fest at Whittamore Park on July 21, from 2 to 6 p.m. Beth Locke, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. Outdoor Restaurant and Retail Permit Application, Sidewalk Cafe by Brickstone Cafe, 309 Broadway. The Second Annual Bike Way Block Party, 250th Celebration, from Christopher Tompkins, Arlington Bicycle Advisory Committee, and Scott Smith. Reappointments to the ABAC, Arlington Bicycle Committee, Christopher Tompkins, term to expire June 30, 2028. Scott Smith, expired June 30, 2028. Jack Johnson, expired June 30, 2028. The Public Memorial Committee, William Yorke-McCarthy, term to expire June 30, 2027. Eugene O'Neil, term to expire June 30, 2026. And now all our requests for one-day beer and wine licenses, which we will be discussing at a future meeting regarding our policy on these. Our request, special one-day beer and wine license, June 14, 2025, First Parish Church of Arlington, for rocking, for refuge, concert, and dance. Phyllis Brown, request special one-day beer and wine license, June 19, 2025, at Robbins Memorial Town Hall for the Arlington Garden Club. Emily Snyder, request special one-day beer and wine license, June 21, 2025, at the Jason Russell House Garden, for Beer Garden and for Porch Fest, Robert Brazil, Arlington Historical Society. Request special one-day beer and wine license, June 26, July 10, 24, August 7, August 21, October 18, 2025, at the Arlington Reservoir Beach, for Thursday night res concert and beer garden. Tom Allen, request special one-day beer and wine license, September 20, 2025, at Jason Russell House Law and Museum, for Beer Garden, Arlington Town Day, Robert Brazil. And request special one-day beer and wine license, June 21, 2025, Robbins Memorial Town Hall Garden, for a garden party, Meredith Zona. Is there a motion? Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was very impressive. I'd like to move approval, but I do have a question on Item 10, so I'll leave that to you, whether you want to bring that, take that out, or just against my question to the Town Manager.
Yes.
So, and I emailed this about earlier today, Jim, but I was contacted by one of the people associated with the fundraiser event on the first of these, at the First Parish of Arlington, for the refugees fundraiser. And they had, they'd been getting different answers about whether or not they were required to get a fire department permit. There's a sprinkler system in the venue, but it's over 100 people. Did you, do you happen to know what the situation is there?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Helmut. A good question. I will note, there was some perhaps confusion around whether or not that decision hinged upon whether a building was sprinkled. It does not. It is based solely on the occupant load of the building, and then the use, as well as serving alcohol. So, in this instance, the crowd manager detail from the fire department would be required for that building.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like, did, Mr. Helmut, did you already move?
I did.
You did. Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
And I think I also had a question on Item 10, and I wasn't certain whether it should be pulled out or not. But I think, consistent with the Board's votes, and based on what Ms. Feeney said, if we're voting this subject to all conditions, the two conditions for Number 10 would be a safety detail and a crowd manager detail from the fire department, and without that, the license is in jeopardy for that night, correct? Based on policy?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's consistent with my motion.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And in case there's any ambiguity, Attorney Cunningham, it's not so much just our decision, it's the law?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's consistent with the Board's past practice, but it is required by applicable state law and regulation. And as Mr. Feeney mentioned, it has no relation to whether sprinklers exist in the building. It's simply a matter of the manner of use for the event and the number of people expected at the event.
Okay. And if we could just pass on to the event organizers. Our apology for any confusion on that. It really isn't something, it's pretty much firm and set out. So, apologies on behalf of the Chair and the Board if there's any ambiguity, but not from this Board or the Select Board Office or Town Council. On a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. De Corsi, to approve the Consent Agenda, Items 4 through 15, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous vote. We now go to Appointments. Agenda Item 16, Commission for Arts and Culture, term to expire June 30, 2027, Maria Lobo. Is Maria here in person or in Zoom? Ms. Lobo, I should say. I'm sorry. Is Ms. Lobo here? All those opposed, unanimous vote. We now go to appointments. Agenda item 16, Commission for Arts and Culture, term to expire, June 30th, 2027, Maria Lobo. Is Maria here in person or in Zoom? Ms. Lobo, I should say. I'm sorry. Is Ms. Lobo here in person or in Zoom? Hi, good evening. Is she unmuted? We can see you. We can't hear you yet, though.
Do you hear me?
I think I can hear you now. Maybe not.
I don't hear you. Give me a second. Okay. You don't hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
If you could just introduce yourself to everyone else, and just talk a little bit about the exciting things you're looking forward to as an appointee to the Commission for Arts and Culture.
Absolutely. Okay. So my name is Maria Lobo. I grew up in Arlington, and then recently moved back like two years ago. I've been involved in a number of public art projects in the town, which is how I became acquainted with the Commission for Arts and Culture. Professionally, I'm a graphic designer. I have a graphic design and marketing studio called Planet Lobo. I'm based in Arlington, who works locally. I'm really excited because honestly, I think that public arts is a connector. I think it gets people talking, gets people excited, and gets people invested in the spaces that they're in. And to be a part of helping people be involved in the arts, connecting community, and yeah, helping build space. So I'm here for any questions that you have.
Thank you. I'm very excited. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Mr. Diggins?
Well, first, thank you, and I'll make a motion to approve the appointment. And a quick question. So what work have you done for the town? I noticed that on Planet Lobo.
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. Sorry, were you done?
No, I was just saying, I saw that Planet Lobo has done some work for the town. By the way, I love the name, you know, but I was just curious, that's what work you've done for the town?
Yeah, absolutely. So in 2022, it started out when I got mural commission, or a mural project that I ended up doing on the Alton Street park there. So I did a couple of mural projects with the town back in 2020. The last two years, I was doing the Arlington 250 prep for the town. So like the banners in front of town hall, some of the social media graphics in collaboration with Leader Bank. I was helping the town with that.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second by Mr. Helmoth? Okay. Any further comments or discussions? I just want to say, welcome to you, Ms. Lobo. I'm really excited about it, and I couldn't agree more. As somebody, my only artistic ability is drawing a tic-tac-toe game square. So I'm always so envious and appreciative of those who have a skill that I never quite honed. And I do appreciate what Arlington and the Arts and Culture Commission has done to bring Arlington basically out into the streets, on the sidewalks, on chairs, on utility boxes, in the schools, and in town hall. And I know you're going to be a great addition to that, and I look forward to it. So on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Helmoth, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you so much. Hope to see you soon.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Thanks. We next go to agenda item 17, appointment to the Disability Commission to expire June 30th, 2028, Alex Dawson. Is Mr. Dawson here in person or by Zoom? If you're out in Zoom, if you could raise your hand or make yourself known. If not, if Mr. Dawson zooms in or jumps into the chat, if someone can just let me know, and we can come back to that. Let's go to agenda item 18, which is appointment to the Historical Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2028, Henry Mantey. And he is here in person. Good evening. Good to see you.
I'm Henry. I just graduated from AHS. I've lived in Arlington my entire life. And I just, I've been on the, I've been an associate commissioner on the Arlington Historic Commission for like a year, since May 2024. And I just, I just love, I want to do, I'm doing architecture at UMass Amherst next year. And I just love, like, I don't know, I love historic architecture, and that's kind of why I joined.
Thank you. And I will say, when I met with the town manager, Mr. Feeny, last Wednesday, and we were going over different parts of the agenda, and we got to appointments, we, I did, was interested, peaked with you applying, and the manager had really great laudatory things to say about you, that you've already been attending and are committed to it. It's sort of your area that you're going further in education. And similar to this committee and the previous one, they do have meetings by Zoom, so you'll be able to attend that way. And I'm thrilled that, you know, at your very young age, and I'm the old lady on the board, that, you know, you're already giving something back to the community. That's a great thing for you to be doing, and we're very appreciative. So I didn't mean to jump in front of my colleagues, but I did. But I did have a conversation with who, with the town manager when I saw that you had applied, and you're 158% committed to this, so I'm thrilled with that. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Mr. Hurd?
Move approval, and congratulations on your graduation. I was at a graduation party on Saturday, and we're just getting drenched the whole time, but it was still a fun affair. And just, again, to echo what the chair said, is to commend you on stepping up at a young age and getting involved, and stepping into college, knowing what you want to do is really amazing, too. I don't, like, I was in my fourth or fifth year before I decided what, what I actually want to do with my life. So it's good to see such drive, and, you know, thank you for giving up what little extra time you have to help, to serve the town.
Mr. Helmoth?
Thank you. I'll happily second that and echo my appreciation for your commitment to service. I'm looking at your resume, and you've already volunteered for Food Link, the Little Fox Resale Shop, and it's clear that you have a real heart for helping people. And I think that's just, couldn't better exemplify the spirit of Arlington at its best. So thank you for that. Thank you for this work. And as this board knows, as we went through some work with Historical Commission at town meeting, that the Commission is in desperate need of help, and I'm very glad that that help has arrived. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
And I'll just say, yeah, thank you. You're really a model, you know, and also, I hope things work out with the crew team. I mean, we heard about what happened in the meeting, and so it's bizarre and bad, and at the same time, so hopefully you all can recover quickly. But yeah, very impressive. I mean, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Decorsi?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, and I just want to echo my colleagues first. Congratulations on your graduation from Arlington High, and best of luck at UMass Hamhurst. And thank you so much for your willingness to do this, because this, as we know, has been a difficult commission to find people willing to do it. And the fact that you're willing to do that while you're going to school is really, really impressive. So best of luck.
Thank you.
And nobody in your family or close friends paid any of us to say any of those things. On a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Helmoth, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you, sir. And we will now go to licenses and permits, agenda item 19, for approval on all alcohol license for Quencha, Inc.? I don't know if I'm saying that correctly. Doing business is La Victoria on Medford Street in Arlington. Are the proponents here? They could just come up. Tell me how I should have said that correctly. Is it Quencha?
Quenka.
Quenka. Thank you.
Quenka.
Just name. Good.
Okay.
If you could just state your name for the record and a brief description for your request for an all alcohol license.
Okay. So my name is Alejandro Barrientos. I own La Victoria, and we just got the spot right next door. And we think that it's going to be a good thing to have, you know, more seating space, but also have the ability to serve beer and margaritas, which, you know, we, like, we have been, like, asked during the years, but we don't have the space. Now you guys reduce the seats that, you know, for the, to apply for the license, but I think we can just have enough seating space to apply for the full liquor license. So we just, you know, still, we just got the approval from the building department in terms of the addition. So, you know, that's the, that's the plan. So, I mean, obviously, if you agree with it.
Thank you.
I don't know if you have any other question, or I should say something else?
Well, might be some questions. Mr. Hurd?
I'll move approval. I have known Alex for a few years as a loyal customer. And I was going in there about a month ago, getting my burrito, and he ran me through the spot next door. I was very excited. I think Arlington could use a good margarita bar. And so I've been telling a lot of people, and there's a lot of excitement already about it. So I, you know, I think, you know, Alex has been a business owner in town for years, always been very responsible. So I don't think there's anyone else, anyone that I think has a better character to run a business, run a alcohol establishment in Arlington. So certainly be happy to support it.
Thank you. Mr. Helmoth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Enthusiastically second that recommendation. I'm also a loyal customer, particularly a fan of the El Chavo torta. I have been known to tell people that is my favorite sandwich in the universe. And this, this, this project solves a problem for me, because it's so good that I've, I've sometimes been tempted not to tell people about it, because I don't want it to become too crowded. But now you're going to have more room in La Victoria, so now I can feel good about spreading the word about the quality of your food. And I appreciate that you are a good, responsible, great member of the community as a business owner.
Well, I'm from Arlington as well.
Yeah, it's perfect. So, no, we're so glad that you're here.
I have been living in Arlington for the last 23 years, like, since I got here.
Yeah. Well, best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Do you have an opening idea?
Well, I mean, the project is still going, because we, we have, you know, some hiccups with building department as usual, but, you know, we're trying to solve that. But, you know, construction, it's never like what expected, but, you know, we'll see. I mean, hopefully, by the end of the summer, like, hopefully, you know?
Excellent.
You never know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, so I'm through. You asked the town manager or the boardman to help me, like, work through the comments, I mean, on the inspection reports. I know, I'm probably taking these things too seriously, but I just want to make sure that everything's really fine. So, so, so the health comment, I mean, says that we need to submit a plan review application. Are we, we good there, or? Okay.
That's correct. Yes, they just have to update their food permit through the border health, but they're all set on that.
Okay. And the next one by AFD, you know, they're kind of waiting until construction's done?
That's correct. Once the construction's done, they'll do a final walkthrough with the Inspection Services Department for their final.
And we're anticipating?
Once we receive all of that, they will get a license from us. So nothing will be given until it's all signed off by every department.
Okay, all right. So we're just, okay. And so if there are any problems, then we'll find out. Okay, then that takes care of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And as we can hear from the testimonials to my right, as well as I, we, all the members of the board have heard, a lot of people are really excited about not only your business, but that you are expanding. So we do look forward to that. And I want to thank Mr. Diggins for helping you to make sure everything's dotted and crossed. So on a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Helmoth, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. We now go to open forum. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration, the board shall neither be acted upon nor a decision made the night of the presentation, in accordance with our policy under which the open forum was established. It is, should also be noted, there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or a request. So I will ask if anyone here in the chambers, or if anyone on Zoom, they can raise their hand now, would like to speak under Citizens Open Forum. Seeing no one in the chambers right now, Ms. Mar?
I have one member.
If you could promote them. Thank you. I just, I think accidentally sent a four-minute recording of this meeting to someone on my text. I'm going to apologize to later.
Hi, can you hear me okay? This is Carl Wagner.
Yes, sir, we can. Good to see you.
Great. Nice to see you all. Thanks for what you're doing tonight, keeping the town running. I wanted to use this period in open comment, because I know that on the agenda later in the evening, item 25 is something to do with the affordable housing overlay. And I wanted to remind the respective members in the room there, the select board, that the ARB voted no action on Article 41, the housing overlay, for a lot of reasons, which you don't want to hear me repeat now. And prior to the housing overlay even coming to the ARB, there were a lot of problems in the way that it was going to be decided upon. And I now see that the Article 41 resolution that came out, or commitment that came out, is to form what appears to be a committee. I'm very concerned that the town meeting did not leave you with an adequate amount of representation of the town in that committee. What I mean is the stakeholders, such as the commercial and residential stakeholders, the elderly, those who are looking out for town finances, open spaces, and that sort of thing, don't appear to be properly represented on the housing overlay. And I hope the people watching today will say, what is this? And they'll look into it. Because while affordable sounds great, it's really, I think, something very dangerous, which would result in even bigger changes than MBTA density. And given that we have had all these changes, I think any kind of committee that you may talk about tonight and may constitute tonight really needs to have better involvement by the public. So if they're not on the committee, please make sure that the public is involved in this much public input, a chance to talk, a chance to understand what's going on as possible. And it's very important, the last thing I'll say is, this committee must not be an implementation of housing overlay. It really can look into whether to go forward, because what I see is Arlington residents and businesses do not want the AHO, do not want Article 41 to be implemented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Ms. Mar, any other hands?
Seeing no other hands, we're sitting.
Seen that. Citizens Open Forum is closed. We will now go to agenda item 20. And again, if Alex Dawson comes in through Zoom, just let me know, and I won't ask again. And I apologize, I may have already attributed suffixes to Alex Dawson, and I shouldn't have done that, perhaps. Agenda item 20, we have John Alessi, a senior transportation planner, who's been working hard on everything, including this, no parking regulation on Water Street. And with Mr. Feeny's permission, should I turn it over to Mr.?
Please do, Madam Chair.
Alessi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And good evening, select board members. My name's John Alessi, Senior Transportation Planner for the town. So I'm before you this evening on behalf of town staff for our request to implement a 291-foot, full-time, no parking regulation area on the western side of Washington Street, in order to address ongoing visibility issues and safety risks. So first, some background on this request. This started by a resident who submitted a roadway safety request form through our town's process. And in the form, it stated that there were visibility issue and safety issues at the crest of Washington Street, towards the end, closer to Forest Street, specifically when there are cars parked on both sides of the street, effectively narrows the roadway into one lane. And if there are two cars coming in both directions at the crest of the hill, you can't see each other, and it does increase the risk of head-on collision. So town staff reviewed the request. We went out to the site to assess. We did notice that the roadway width is narrow if cars are parked on both sides, and that there is the risk of head-on collisions if cars are coming in both directions. So with that, town staff tried to address the issue, and implementing a no parking regulation on the western side of the street was viewed as the most effective solution. We're proposing 291 feet on the western side. This side was chosen because there are less residencies on this side, particularly there's the Turkey Hill reservation on that side. So we thought we would have the least amount of impact to on-street parking for residencies. There also is precedent for this throughout the town. Just down the street, on Academy Street, towards Irving Street, there is no parking at the crest of the hill there, where there are visibility concerns on both sides of the street. But town staff determined that we could only, well, that we could do no parking full-time only on one side of the street to achieve the outcome we want, to reduce safety risks, while also minimizing the impact to on-street parking. to achieve the outcome we want, to reduce safety risks while also minimizing the impact to on-street parking. So again, the request is to implement a 291-foot full-time no parking area on the western side of Washington Street. And I'm happy to answer any questions and thank you for considering this.
Thank you. And just, Mr. Feeney?
If I could, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Alessi. One thing I would add is that as town staff reviewed this request and brought it to my attention, it was clear that it came from a resident who was simply a passerby. And because of that, we took an extra step this time around, something that we wouldn't necessarily normally do. But through Mr. Alessi and the Department of Planning and Community Development, we actually sent out a notice to a butters so that those who may be most impacted by this issue would have had direct notification of same and also made them aware that this would be an agenda item at the board's, for the board's consideration this evening. We just didn't want to find ourselves in a circumstance where a change in signage were to be approved by this board, just appeared one day in the neighborhood and there was no neighborhood or a butter discussion about that. So we tried to preclude that scenario by sending out a notice, though not required, in advance so that folks would be aware of what the board was being asked to consider. So there may in fact be people from the neighborhood this here this evening who may wish to speak. I just wanted to flag that for the chair.
And that would be my first question before I turn to my colleagues is, actually two questions. First, if the town through Mr. Alessi or Mr. Feeney has heard from any Washington Street residents through communication, electronic and otherwise, as well as if there are any Washington Street residents who received a notice that would like to express their opinion at this time. So the first question in terms of, have you received anything?
Yes, we, I received, I forget the exact number, about three to four responses from the residents when I sent out the letter to them about a month and a half ago. A lot of them were stating concerns with other things along the corridor of Washington Street, speeding and things like that, requesting other things like traffic calming. But in receiving those notices, town staff still felt that, you know, what we're proposing here tonight will address the issue that was outlined in the request. Knowing that throughout my other work with like traffic calming throughout the town, that we're going to start considering things like that once we have like finished this project, a guide and prioritization tool. But we felt that this would be a meaningful impact that we could make to improve safety here. And I think that there are some residents in the room right now, maybe virtually as well, who might want to speak as well to talk directly about their concerns. So I'm happy to go to the side and ask questions or answer questions afterward if needed.
Thank you. So I would ask if there's anyone here tonight in person in the chambers? And if there's anyone at Zoom, if you could start using your raise hand feature in Zoom, we'll call on you after. I see at least two hands here in the chamber. I guess you could come up to the table and, one at a time, and just give your name, address and remarks to the board. And where I anticipate we may have a few, I'll, I'll stay and comport with the three-minute recommendation for remarks.
Hi.
Up to three minutes, go ahead, sorry.
Mark Morenci. I live at 329 Washington Street on the east side. I did send a letter, so I'm not going to repeat what I said in the letter. I trust that that was circulated and read. I want to bring up two more points that I did not bring up in my letter that were not considered by the town. Number one, the crest, so first to explain, my house is adjacent to the crest of the hill. I'm at 329, basically the crest of the hill is 328. I am not affected by the parking ban. I have never parked or had guests park on that side of the road. However, as I've lived in that spot for five years, there are, there are one unique thing about that spot. If you can imagine traveling, say, northbound on Washington Street, it's like most streets in Arlington, we're blessed with lots of trees, lots of bushes and barriers to visibility, basically. The crest of the hill is almost adjacent to where the terminus is for the gas pipeline. And so from that point up to Claude Terrace or Claude Street, whatever it's called, where Washington curves, including my front yard, there's a, there's a right-of-way of 15 feet, 15 or 20 feet where there are no bushes, no trees, no, not even a mailbox, not even, you know, no, no telephone poles. Nothing is allowed to be placed on top of that gas pipeline. Therefore, if you can imagine driving north on Washington Street, traffic is relatively calm, relatively okay, because there's natural barriers to their visibility. All of a sudden, you get this great right-of-way where it looks, it creates this optical effect that it's absolutely clear. And I can tell you, as people approach that hill, it looks nice and clear. If there are no cars parked, they accelerate. And by the time they're passing my house, there, many of them are doing 40. You know, the person said that they were almost struck by, by an SUV doing 40 miles per hour. Plenty of vehicles are doing 40, 45, whatever. Brings me to my second point. So number one, we don't want to take away barriers that prevent people from accelerating at that spot because that is where people accelerate. Second point is the town, in, in the town's review, they did review that spot and there have been no accidents in the past five years at the crest of the hill, although the complaint was the crest of the hill. However, this situation is related with, if people are accelerating as they go over the crest of the hill, they are continuing to go fast as they hit Clyde Terrace, whatever it's called. And there's a curve and there's two problems there. There's a blind curve in the road and there's lots of cars parked. In my five years of living in that spot, I have seen two accidents at least that I know of. And so while there may not be accidents caused by speeding right in that spot, there are accidents caused where the curve of the hill is, at the bottom of the hill. And so by removing parking in that area, really what you're doing is creating a dangerous situation. And it's not solving the actual problem that was originally arose because the complaint clearly talks about, yes, it's a blind hill, but the issue was speeding over the blind hill. So to resolve that, you need either speed bumps or, you know, whatever, signage, whatever you want to do. But preventing parking is not the solution. It's actually going to aggravate the problem.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
I think we had another hand?
My name is Mina Papolidis. I live at 324 Washington Street.
I'm sorry, could you say your name again?
Mina Papolidis.
Mina, thank you, sorry.
I live 324 Washington Street. Because I'm a terrible public speaker, I'm going to read my email. Just pretty much explains everything. And my neighbor here, I feel exactly how he feels. So this just kind of reinforces that. Okay, so we would like to express our concern, me, my neighbors, my family, about the proposed no parking regulation in front of 324 Washington Street. Rather than improving safety, we believe this change would make conditions more dangerous for both drivers and pedestrians. The real issue on the stretch, on this stretch is not parked cars, it's excessive speeding. Especially near the crest of the hill. By 328 Washington, drivers often fail to slow down, creating hazardous hazards for those entering or exiting driveways and for pedestrians walking along the street. Our driveway at 324 Washington is blind and it is already difficult to exit safely due to limited visibility. And speeding traffic, ironically, when a car is parked in front of our home, it naturally slows drivers down. Without a parked car, vehicles speed through and because there are no sidewalks, we've been, we've had several close calls, while walking our small dog as well. Turning into our driveway often results in tailgating and impatient drivers sometimes pass us on the opposite side of the road. Even when our turn signal is on, the true safety issue is reckless driving, not street parking. This is a residential area with no sidewalks. Residents, children, seniors, guests, I've seen them all, must share the road with traffic, make it essential to maintain any measures that help calm speeding. Removing parking would only widen the road and encourage even faster driving, just like my neighbor suggested. So we do propose the following alternatives to improve safety. Install a blind driveway warning sign before 328 Washington. Add speed bumps before and possibly after the crest of the hill. Install, possibly install a radar, I've seen them in certain areas. A radar speed signal to alter, tell their drivers of their speed because they go so fast. So, I mean, that's pretty much, much it. I mean, Washington Street is a close-knit neighborhood. People walk, gather, they, they rely on parking. Taking that away does not solve the problem and puts everyone at greater risk. And we respectfully urge you to reconsider this proposal and focus on solutions that direct, directly address the speeding problem and protect the safety of all who live and walk here. That's how we feel.
Very good public speaking, I think. Thank you. And I'll come back to the room in case, is anyone else, anyone in Zoom? Anyone else in the chambers? If not, I'll turn to my colleagues. Anyone wish to stop the discussion on this? Mr. Hurd?
I guess I just have a process question about this because I can't recall. I mean, usually where the first stop are safety issues. And I get it, you know, it wasn't emailed directly to us, but it seems like something that should have came to us to redirect back out. And I know we've at times gotten correspondence received about safety issues and said, all right, you know, we're going to send it to TAC or we're going to send it to the town manager to address it. But usually when we send it to the town manager's office, in my recollection, and I could be wrong, it was something small, like does it, is there a, should there be a stop sign here? I mean, this is sort of a larger safety concern, which is now becoming a full-street concern from, you know, residents that it seems like something that, you know, if this came to us directly, we would send to TAC for review and recommendation. And that's, I mean, I guess I don't have enough information here to see, to know that the no parking is the appropriate way to, to address the safety issues because we didn't see the safety issues initially. And it just, it seems the scope of the problem on Washington Street, which I, you know, I have heard from residents. I know, you know, a few residents that live on Clyde Terrace that have reached out to me about putting, you know, just a slow children sign. But, you know, I, I feel like I would be more comfortable with the more thorough, and not that town staff, I'm sure it was a completely thorough analysis, but sort of a, you know, global review of Washington Street from TAC and, you know, with a, with recommendations from, through that avenue. It just seems more in line with our general process for something of this nature.
Mr. Diggins?
Well, I thought maybe the town manager was going to chime in, but, but we have put in a process being where residents may can be asked for, I mean, certain treatments. And then that goes to the town manager being and, and staff being. And if they think it's appropriate to take it up, I mean, they take it up and then we'll make a recommendation to us. And it's meant to streamline the process because coming to the select board, you know, can, it can take up to two weeks to get to us, you know, and then, and then we need to relay it to TAC. I mean, depending on the calendar, it can be a month then before it gets to TAC. And then this needs to get onto TAC's agenda, which will be like another month. I mean, so this process was put into place in order to just try to get us to solutions faster. I understand what you're saying here. You're thinking that, you feel that this is a bigger scope problem, I mean, than, than maybe a smaller, I'm creating a straw argument here, but a smaller problem, I mean, that could perhaps require less input and less deliberation. I mean, this one's borderline, you know. I, I certainly see and understand the, the request to be, be, I am certainly in favor of slower streets, you know, especially if we can enforce, I mean, that reduced speed. I mean, it's one thing to put a sign there. I mean, if we feel that having a sign there will encourage people to go slower, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of, of putting it there. I think there's no harm in putting a sign that says, I mean, go slower. I mean, whether that's like reducing the speed to 20, I mean, or, or, or whatever, I mean, or maybe other signs. I mean, so to me, it would be a matter of, I mean, reducing the parking, following the recommendation of staff and putting a sign, you know, there that would, you know, reduce the speed. And we could still chuck it to TAC, I mean, for bigger treatment. But I think what TAC would say is, let's see what's going to come out of the traffic calming guide because we've been waiting for that for a while. You know, I mean, from that, I think we might get some sense as to what can be done in that spot, in other spots. And if the traffic calming guide doesn't really address this adequately, then we could take it up, I mean, for further deliberation. So that was a mouthful. Did that address your concern, Mr. Hurd? Or your thoughts?
I mean, I still think that this, the scope of this request and, you know, some of the concerns we have would warrant it going to TAC for, you know, more robust recommendation. And I guess I just, as I'm sitting here, I'm not, and again, it's just me, I'm one person here, but I'm not convinced that the proposed solution is about, it might be, but I just, I don't see that, you know, just taking the parking out all of a sudden addresses all the concerns that we're hearing.
So if I could say, well, I, I could say more, but I'll stop and see if my colleagues want to say something.
DeCorsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Alessi, for the presentation. Thank you to the neighbors and the two neighbors here tonight. And we heard from the Webers as well, who live at the crest of, of Washington Street. And I think this situation, we, at least for the residents that have responded to us, that, that the response is consistent. Every one of them is concerned about this regulation. So that, that gives me pause and I appreciate the fact that there was notification given. But it, it sounds like everybody wants a slower street. It, it's just, how do you get there? And, and so I'm a little reluctant right now to, to support that type of change, maybe down the road. But I also have a question, maybe both for Mr. Alessi and for the neighbors. We have this no parking regulation, at least that's still on our parking, traffic bylaws. It says no parking 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM and 3:00 to 6:00 throughout Washington Street. And other than a message that the signage can't be read, which I, I confirmed that when I drove up, and I'm up and down Washington Street from, from time to time, I'm just wondering what, let's put aside the recommendation for no parking. How do people feel about that regulation throughout that part of Washington Street? And it's not really referenced in the memo, so I'm just wondering what, what's the feeling? Because you're asking us to make a change for 3,500 feet and there's a recognition that signs can't be read, but I'd like to hear a little bit more about that.
Well, thank you, Mr. DeCorsi. So, you know, I wasn't around when the, you know, the peak hour no parking regulation was put into effect. But town staff's thought was, you know, if there is the, you know, peak hours on both sides, there could be an instance where, you know, during those off-peak, or during the off-peak hours where there could be parked cars on both sides at the crest of the hill. We didn't consider changing the existing regulation of the peak hour parking. But I also just wanted to point out that I'm like very receptive to these concerns about speeding and the need for traffic calming. I hear that from every resident really throughout the town. That's why I'm working on a project to prioritize where the town should be dedicating our time and resources. But I think we're talking about two different issues here right now. There's one that's like the specific safety risk at the crest of this hill. And then there's the separate one of the need for, you know, traffic calming on Washington Street. So, you know, the, the proposal we have here is to address that one issue, but knowing that, you know, I'm making good efforts throughout my work to see where we should be prioritizing traffic calming. I know that doesn't answer your question specifically, but, yeah.
Okay. And, and just a question on sign, one thing I didn't look at is signage. I mean, I know we have a town-wide speed limit, but what, close to that, to the crest or as you're coming up Washington or you're coming from the other side from Forest, what do we have for speed limit signs, if, if any, or, or signs asking people to slow down? If you know. Okay, seeing zero from?
Yeah, I don't think, so typically the town has had the white background speed limit signs, which are informed by MassDOT Special Speed Regulation. So a MassDOT engineer came out, did a speed study, and that's the posted speed limit. So this board has rescinded those special speed regulations. So we don't have any of those in the town at this point. But, you know, we are actively putting up the advisory speed limit signage with the yellow background that is permitted under Massachusetts law. So, you know, that's something that we could consider on the street. But I like to say that, you know, the best traffic calming is physical infrastructure that actually prevents you from speeding. You know, a speed limit sign, you know, like it, we're asking people to abide by it. It's not going to physically force somebody down. And, you know, again, the issue- And, you know, again, the issue of having, you know, two cars at 25 miles an hour at the crest of the hill, you know, they have more reaction time going slower at that point, but you're still going to be, if there's a situation where cars are parked on both sides, you're still going to be coming at each other slower, but it's less of a risk if you're, say, going 40 miles an hour.
Okay, I just have a comment. I appreciate the, the work that you do for the town, everything you do as a transportation planner, Mr. Alessi. And, and I'm torn here because, again, like I said, the people in the best position to see what's going on in their neighborhood who've lived it are telling us we don't want this and that there are other issues. So, I, I am, at least personally, feel that, you know, is there, is there further discussion or that, that can take place here, that, and maybe at the end of the day, that's the only solution. I don't, I don't know, but at least at first blush, when I, when I hear these comments, it, it gives me pause about moving forward. So, I'd like to hear what other members say, if anything, on, on this.
Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Alessi. Appreciate the diagrams and the thorough memo, and I also appreciate the comments from the neighbors. Do we know what the traffic compliance is, is right now, what the compliance is with the existing no parking regulations from 7:00 to 10:00 and 3:00 to 6:00?
I'm sorry, Mr. Helmut, I can't speak to that. I think probably the police department, the traffic unit, might have better understanding of that, but I'm not sure, I'm sorry.
No, that's fair. And I do know that you've, you've noted that the signage is, is hard to spot, so, I mean, just, is there a way to ask the residents what their perception of that is? I don't know how we would do that procedurally in this meeting, but, you know, I'd like to, since they know kind of what, what the sense of the neighborhood is, are, are people parking there, or is that restriction being, is that restriction being followed now, or is it just being ignored because people aren't seeing it? Somebody could...
I think one of the neighbors actually has an answer.
That'd be great. That's a little unorthodox, but we have information here, it'd be great.
I actually have very good information because I come from a large city, so I mistakenly moved to Arlington and put cameras all around my house and then learned how safe this city is. I can see on my cameras probably 200 feet of the 290 or whatever that's proposed, which is the section that's all forest across the road from me. The last time a car parked there was May 20th, to this day. There's just nobody parking there. So, this is, I mean, aside from those couple of houses that are affected, it's kind of a moot point, except for the fact that I'm worried about people cresting the hill, knowing there's not going to be a car parked there, as opposed to cresting the hill with the risk that maybe there will be a car parked there, so I'll slow down.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful.
And by the way, I had no idea that there were times when we couldn't park because the sign is truly not visible.
Thank you. If we could ask Mr. Alessi to return, perhaps, for a question, but that's, that's informative, despite the musical chairs here.
Good workout. Good workout.
I would, and I, I think I share Mr. DeCoursey's sense of being torn. You know, on the one hand, we have professionals whose expertise and opinion I respect, hands down. You know, saying that a safety concern's been brought to their attention and that they, in their professional opinion, which is much more informed than mine, you know, say that this is something that the town ought to do. And I'm, I'm mindful that all too often, we are asked to do something when there's been a crash, and then people say, why didn't you? You know, and now we're in this situation now, you know, where we, we have advice from our own professionals that we ought to do, we ought to do this. So, I think I'd certainly take that seriously. I also take seriously the, the ground truth that we have from the residents, who I think in good faith are, are giving a perspective based on what they live. So, I'm certainly in favor of taking some more time with this, but I don't want to take this, for me, I wouldn't take this option off the table. I think I want a better understanding, and maybe that can be had through more process or at least more time. But one question I have to further that to Mr. Alessi, is I think you've heard both in the letters and, and the testimony tonight, you know, concerned that if we did make this official, that it would actually, it could actually exacerbate the problem by, by widening the path of travel or ensuring that it's a widened path of travel. And I wonder if you could comment on that from your point of view.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. So, I think that it's a relatively short area. I think if it were double the size, 600 feet or something like that, that could result in potentially some more comfort in speeding, knowing that the roadway is more wide, but I think it's relatively short, so I'm not too concerned about, you know, speeding up within that short period. I, I also, you know, I hear the concerns here that, you know, the board is listening to right now, and as I stated in the memo, there haven't been any recorded crashes at this area. This is more of like a proactive safety improvement. You know, I think, speaking on behalf of town staff, you know, having this option on the table and, you know, assessing down the line whether or not it's needed is something that I think we would be open to. I won't speak for you, Mr. Town Manager, but...
You can speak for yourself.
Yeah, and, and, you know, here this evening, just like hearing from the residents, you know, I am keeping a tally of corridors that are of concern for speeding to be informed by the traffic calming guide, and, you know, I've noted those and will, you know, consider those as the project is completed too, so.
Yeah, thank you for that. And the final thing I would say, Madam Chair, is that I, I agree with what's been said too, that this, we may be talking about different things, and it's, I think the fact that we might need traffic calming or speed reduction doesn't necessarily mean that we don't need to look at the parking. I think that these, you know, these can be separate processes, sometimes you need an additive solution, you know, for a particularly dangerous area, but that has to be balanced with the fact that on the one hand, we don't have any crashes, on the other hand, we have advanced warning that there is a dangerous situation, and I don't love being in a situation that maybe something potentially severe happens and we were warned, you know? And so, so, you know, that's the situation we have now, and I think that's how the process was intended to work. We have this facility for residents to tell us about things and, and make suggestions, and so then it's our responsibility, once warned, to, to act on that. So, so I appreciate all that, and I might leave it to my other colleagues to decide exactly what motion to make.
I guess I, I would briefly say that I, I do weigh a lot on, in terms of anecdotal and first-person history and knowledge, and I'm a firm believer in parked cars are one of those physical barriers that, that do slow down traffic. Living near the Odison and the Greek Church and Jimmy's Steakhouse, and I, I live on a small little street that has like six, two families on each side, and when there's no Odison, no Jimmy's Steakhouse, no St. Athanasius Church parking, people fly down my street, like doing 25 to 30. They don't, it seems like they're going 40 or 50. I don't think you can do that unless you have a El Camino two-seater, you know, cab eight kind of engine to get that speed that quickly, so. And I'm also a firm believer in neighborhoods and residents who live there, short amount of time, as well as, you know, 10, 20-plus years. And I, I do know the person who wrote this, he acknowledged, I think it was, I'm not even sure of the, the gender, so they acknowledged that they don't live in the neighborhood, they hadn't canvassed anybody in the neighborhood, and I, I found it interesting that they put in there that ever since this incident happened, they now go slower and slow down because of this, because of the parked cars. So, I don't re, and, and they also acknowledge that they, they do not have an expertise in engineering, and they put forth three possible suggestions, this being one, as well as two others. So, I am not comfortable moving forward on, on this recommendation right now, especially where, and we're trying a new process, and I understand that, and I think we should continue to do that. I'm a firm believer of the, you know, neighborhood process and neighborhood canvassing, coming to the town, having done that piece, and then the town taking it from there, applying the professional expertise and knowledge that they have. But I do have a question, so I would not be comfortable in, in moving forward, especially where the person who put this in here, who said, you know, perhaps no parking so that the car coming down at him going 40, he wouldn't have had, they wouldn't have had to slow down and go slow now in the future if no cars are there, which tells me they both will be able to go 40. And to me, that's not a good solution, but this may be, it is a stretch in a region, it may not be applicable. And I'd, I'd like to ask the town manager, I know that with talk of the Arlington Heights Business District, the Transportation Advisory Committee, the POCAV corridor concerns that have been raised and how we're addressing them, I have it in my head that the manager is working not just within the framework of the capital plan, but I want to say perhaps I have identified either some funding or some state funding that will go towards looking at the different corridors in town. Am I correct that that is something that maybe is going to come, has come through an earmark? And if I'm correct, please tell me if I am, is this something we could apply Washington Street to also look at in terms of signage, speed cushions, et cetera? So, first, am I right? I'm, I'm just going by memory.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, you know, this board, as long, as well as the town manager's office, has prioritized traffic safety and pedestrian safety, so when offered the opportunity to submit earmarks in the state budget, especially those associated with surplus fair share amendment funds, in reviewing with our legislative delegation, we did request that if anything was going to be submitted on Arlington's behalf, but that it be for funds associated with traffic safety or pedestrian safety enhancements. Obviously, we have a few priority locations already identified that have been before this board, but that would not necessarily preclude us, you know, setting aside those funds from looking at the speeding issue as being discussed tonight. I think what Mr. Alessi and town staff were attempting to address was solely the visibility issue. That does not preclude any analysis of collecting speed data to see if any traffic calming measures or, or something else may be warranted in the future. So, you know, I, I think you're wise to say that, but I think with this respect, with this request in particular, it's that, you know, it was raised by a resident, it was reviewed, there was consensus from staff about a recommendation, weren't comfortable in just sort of forwarding that recommendation in a vacuum, wanted to include staff, but of course, it is, you know, up to this board to certainly vote that, and we have to be responsive to these requests when we come in and propose a solution, but if it's not the right solution, that's okay too. We can say it was analyzed, a recommendation was made, and that it was not deemed to be the right fit at this time, and that perhaps future study or analysis is warranted in the future.
Okay, so I guess my, make it short, Mahan answer would be, I would be more, I would not be in favor of voting this tonight, based on what I've heard and the limited research that I've done. Certainly would agree with Mr. Hurd's suggestion regarding Transportation Advisory Committee and looking at the issue as a whole, not just this particular person who now is telling us they have, now go slower, and if we move those cars, they can go faster. To me, that's not a solution. As well as also moving forward if we do get that earmark, which I'm usually not a great believer in, we're going to get an earmark from the state with all due respect, but on this one, I do have some confidence that we will be getting funding, so I'd like to, you know, add Washington Street from Summer Street up a little beyond Clyde Terrace, if and when we do get those funds. But I, I'll, I'll look to my colleagues in terms of any motion, but those are my thoughts right now. Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I'm going to leave it to someone who wants to do something later to make the motion. I just have a question and then a, a statement. So, maybe two questions, I mean, to Mr. Alessi, I mean, so you said there was consensus in the working group needing to do this? I mean, was there any disagreement at all in the, the group about how to move forward?
I don't believe there is any disagreement amongst the group. You know, there was an acknowledgement that, you know, there haven't been crashes at this location, so that's kind of, that was an acknowledgement that was made, but again, this was more seen as kind of like, you know, a proactive safety improvement.
Right, and, and there's no speed analysis, right?
Uh, no speed.
Although, I gotta say, that camera data might give us some, some real, some real data, so, so maybe we can use that if it's made. And, and, I mean, I understand the concern about, I mean, or the feeling, the observation that the parking reduces the speed in, on the roadway, I mean, but if we're counting on parking to reduce the speedway, then we have a problem because it's not something, you know, that's guaranteed. And if we really want to slow the speed on a roadway, as you said, we have to take other measures, I mean, and so if we want to do that, then we need to really seriously determine what measures we're going to take, I mean, in order to slow the speeds down, either it's physical barriers or it's hardcore enforcement, you know, as much as the state will allow us to do. So, that's why I would be inclined, I mean, to go ahead and put these measures in place because at least it will help to address, I mean, the risk of the head-on collision. And if, if someone were to say to me, we always have parking there and it's always going to be slower there, then I'd say, okay, I mean, then, then we can count on that, but that's not the situation here, I mean, and so, so, I'd rather do something incremental sooner, you know, but, you know, if we want to send it, you know, to TAC with some, some good direction, I mean, so that they can, I mean, not to say do it really fast, but at least give them explicit direction, I mean, then, then of course, I'll go along with that and, and I'll even vote for it. So, thank you.
So, Mr. Hurd? Oh, did you, no? Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will move that we refer this to TAC, but I think I want to be, with that good direction, I want to be very clear that I'm not trying to second-guess the town staff, and I don't, I'm not asking TAC to be an appeals board here. I think that I, I would expect TAC will, will take the work that's been done as a data point and, and as a given and, and expand upon that. And I do like the suggestions we've heard, to ask them to look at the, at the whole corridor, and I think that that could come into, could come in handy when we look at the, the concerns about speed and maybe, you know, specifically address that. We might get some additional expertise that would give the board some more information about what to do with this. But I personally, I think, agree with Mr. Diggins that I think the, the absence of parked cars now, you know, tells us that if, if there's still visibility concerns, and right now, we're not releasing cars parked there by and large, that, that we are well advised to consider doing something, and I think maybe TAC could give us an idea about what that something should be. They come back to us with the same recommendation, then we'll have at least that information to consider.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll second Mr. Helmut's motion and, and reiterate again, this may be the right solution, I'm just not ready this evening, and, and again, I appreciate all the, all the work you're doing, and, you know, maybe there is something that will come out of this process, and I'm not going to support this motion to send it to TAC so that we don't hear about it again for two years. I'd, I'd like it, to the extent it can, to be a priority and, and have input and, and try to find a solution here, but, and, and I think Mr. Helmut makes a good point, it's not, we're not looking at TAC to be the appeals court here, but, but, but to look at this, so, thank you.
Mr. Alessi?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to add that I know that our safety group has, like, made a referral to TAC already to look at a couple intersections on Washington Street, so I think they'd be happy to just expand the scope in order to encompass this review as well for the corridor, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so no further questions or comments on a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you so much, and please pass our thanks on to everyone who's worked on this, and obviously now will continue to work on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, select board members.
Agenda item 21, an additional overnight parking spot, 118 Paul Revere Road. When I had a conversation with the manager about this, it's my understanding that it's 118 120 Paul Revere Road, it's a two-family, 120, has two on-street parking permits, and the proponents are from 118 Paul Revere Road who have one overnight parking permit and are requesting for a second. Did I say that correctly? And I only say that because it was a little confusion in the way I put the agenda. It has 120, but you are, if you can say your name and address for the record, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. My name is Alicia Young, I live at 118 Paul Revere Road.
And my name is Jeffrey Rowich, I live at 118 Paul Revere Road. And what you described, Madam Chair, is exactly what we're asking about for our residents. It's a two-family home, but there are, until I moved here, I never been in a two-family home that it wasn't one street address, number one and number two, so it's very much two distinct addresses. And I won't read my whole email here, but I have lived at 118 Paul Revere Road since 2012 as a renter, and Alicia, who, to whom I'm married, moved in in 2021.
Yes.
So, that's where the two of us come into play. Having lived it for, since 2012, I know for a fact with previous housemates that we did have two overnight on-street permits because of, I do find it a little amusing that not having a driveway in Arlington constitutes a hardship under the definitions of parking permits, but for that reason, and in fact, I have, from your own... But for that reason, and in fact, I have, from your own, I have referenced materials from your own Select Board agenda from a previous meeting on June 10th of 2024, the, this was in online, the 2018 on-street overnight permit that shows my two former housemates at 118 who each had their own parking permit. So this is just to show that we did have two permits assigned to that address in the past. Ever since Alicia moved in, we haven't, there have not been need for, I shouldn't even say that, even going back probably to 2019 when Ms. Yu, who's listed here, moved out. Since then, we, there would not need for two permits, and so there was never a request for two until just recently, when we purchased a second car for work. So it might have, when we were told that there were not, there were not even two permits assigned to our residents, I was wondering if that was why, because we haven't requested them for that long. But we have, in the meantime, taken advantage of the on-street overnight parking pilot program. So our second car has had that permit through, which is good, through the end of this month.
Right.
But we don't know what we would do after that without getting a second overnight permit, since we do not have a driveway at our residence.
You said it far better than I. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question, and I'm glad to see that you took advantage of the overnight parking pilot. Is your, are you coming here out of concern that that program has ended, or do you feel like, because for the research, you feel like it's a hardship situation as opposed to a situation where you could continue on the overnight parking program?
I guess that it's our understanding that we didn't see anywhere online or anywhere that that pilot program was being extended another year, and if we're incorrect about that, then...
Yeah, it's been extended.
Oh.
Okay. So that's fine.
Okay.
But just, I've just known that since I moved in, it was communicated to me. I actually am the one who, way back in 2012, not for these two housemates, but for those previous housemates, went in and applied on their behalf with the resident, with the materials for the permits way back then. So I just know we've always had to, and so I guess I'm not exactly sure what the cost differential is.
Yeah, there's a difference in cost, and that's, overnight parking is essentially, what's 300 a year, Ms. Mar, or 360? $1 a day.
A day, right.
And the hardship program, there's a fee upfront, but after year one, I think it's $75 a year.
So that would be, you know, that would be...
Yeah.
I didn't major in math, but I don't...
Right. But you know the difference there? Yeah, I'll, I just wanted to get that on the table based on what you, what you had said previously, and it raises questions in my mind in terms of the extent of a hardship. And we've offered this program as a pilot, and I don't know if we're quite there yet as a board as to a situation like yours, and when the hardship ends and when, if there is an additional car, it should be part of the overnight program versus two hardship cases. And I will say, there is a precedent a little further up, and this goes back years on the corner of Sutherland and Paul Revere, where I think there is two hardship permits, but that was an anomaly back in the, I think back in the 2013 time period. So, but thank you for the information. I just wanted to get that question out.
Could I respond?
Sure.
To that statement? Our, the unit, the one, the unit at 120, which is, again, like the second-family home, is a two-bedroom unit. The unit that we live in is a three-bedroom unit. And so we feel strongly, if 120 has two permits assigned to it as a two-bedroom, that it shouldn't be so much of a stretch to think that a three-bedroom would also get two permits. I've just never had a car at my disposal before, recently. So I'm the one who didn't need the permit previously.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll just note, although it's further in the agenda, but there are no more overnight parking permits right now unless we make a vote. There's about 12 or 15 people who are on a waiting list. Am I correct about that, Ms. Mar? So I just put that out there.
This permit being one of them, though?
They already have one.
Yeah, yeah. So they're part of the 125.
They would be included? Okay, okay. Mr. Hurd?
Do I really, no problem granting this? I know that that area has, you know, traditionally been an area where people have received overnight parking permits. I think you bring up a point that we need to roll into our overnight, we used to call it a pilot. I don't think we call it a pilot anymore. It's just a program that we created, and it's been relatively successful, so I don't think that's going to go anywhere. I think as part of that, there was a hardship, there was a financial hardship as part of our pilot program, but it's something that we need to look back at, that now that we have overnight parking available, whether or not having a driveway creates a hardship for the separate avenue of permitting. And I also, you know, we've had people that have come in here before, residents, talking about how this permit attaches to the house, and I don't think we've ever, it's not written anywhere that once we give that permit that we have to give it forever. So there is no, even if we gave you this permit, you know, we could take it away. So, right, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong. See, I just, that's just a point of clarification. I think we can come up with a solution to suit your family needs. We don't want to, you know, have people have to, you know, find new housing or move out of town because, you know, the parking situation doesn't meet their needs, and that's part of the reason we spent a lot of time on this overnight parking program, which has, again, been successful. And, you know, so, again, I'm not, I'm happy to grant the request, but if it's just a situation where, you know, you can continue with the receiving the second permit as a part of the overnight parking program, then that might just be the avenue to go down because, again, I think we need to relook at what this, you know, the hardship program is. I just think in certain situations where we have individuals that have, are receiving permits for $75 a year and some that are paying $365, then it's going to become an issue at some point.
So was that a motion to approve, though? Or no?
Um, I want to hear.
That's fine. Mr. Helms?
I had a question. Thank you, Madam Chair. So that they have, the program formerly known as pilot, a $365 permit, as current holders of that, are they, will they, are they guaranteed to get that on a renewal?
It's still first come, first served. They'll get an email stating that we've opened the pilot, well, the program up for renewal. Again, there's only 125. So if we've added a number of people to that list that are potential wants, 10 to 15, they will also receive an email letting them know that the pilot has opened for the end of the year. So if we get, you know, 125 and they're not the first 125, then they technically would not get a permit. I'm not saying that that's not going to happen.
I understand. But the way, so the way we structured, or at least the way we're implementing, I had always believed that you would have first chance at a renewal, just like, you know, a lot, you know, the common situations and that, and that, but if it's a first pass to gate every year, that's new information to me, but I appreciate having it. So, yeah, no, my colleagues are going to say something. I'm just trying to make sure I get this right so I can set them up for those good questions. Because I think this is, to me, is a material piece of information, you know, that I have been up until this point, assuming that they would have no problem, you know, and maybe we need to craft a policy, that they would be eligible for that. That, so I'll leave that to others to hop on that and maybe sort that out. I want to voice my support for my calling Mr. Hurd's thoughtful approach to this, I think is a more question to the board, which is, what do we want to do? What do we want to do now that we have, we have added this formally pilot program with the overnight? We have, we have a way of relieving the condition of no driveways. Do we, is it fair to consider that a hardship? We have a mix of hardship and non-hardship permits. Now, we clearly need to sort that out, and that's not their fault. So, you know, we, as Mr. Hurd said, we'll find a way to...
We're happy to be part of the process.
We appreciate your sacrifice. And I also do, we're glad that you're part of the town, and that you're a relatively new residents, and the fact that you're willing to work with us and as we work through this is very much appreciated. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the only reason I was a little anxious to get in here is because you were saying the information you got from the Board of Men was relevant to what you were going to think next. How we do a renewal is to be determined, I mean, by us. So you were under the assumption, you know, that they would get first dibs at renewal. That was kind of my working thought. The Board of Men felt differently.
I'm just noting in our policy, it does state under the pilot program that it is a first come, first served basis that this board approves.
Right. For getting them, but not necessarily for renewal because...
They will get, I mean, again, this is totally up to the board's decision, not mine. But if, you know, we will send an email to the 125 people that are on the program first, they will get the email, you know, the chance to be approved first. But, I mean, if they, if other people are coming in and the period is still open, we will accept new applications.
Right, 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 right. I mean, so, but the renewal aspect of this, I mean, is to be determined by us, hopefully tonight. And so, and with respect to hardship, my understanding is that they don't have parking on Paul Revere Road. And so that's the hardship. And for me, they should get the hardship rate. It should not be, I mean, like, that they need to get the overnight parking rate. And with respect to how we divvy up Paul Revere Road, I mean, to me, it's like, how many parking spaces do we have, I mean, on that road, and what is the demand? I would be in favor of just the first come, first served, with respect to requests for hardships. And when we get to a point where we run out of space, I mean, and we have, I mean, some people who may have two spaces or maybe even three for like, I'm just making the example hard, then we have to start pulling back, I mean, on those who have multiple spaces, you know, to allow for those who don't, I mean, have space but live on that street, you know, to get the space. So we just kind of adjust based on demand, but I'd be totally in favor of just giving them the two hardships, I mean, and not requiring that they do the overnight parking.
Is that a motion or no?
Sure. I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Diggins, which I am inclined to support. Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll second the motion for discussion, but I, and I think you're seeing again in real time, we've been through this the past few years on our, on our program, and I think part of the confusion too on renewal, when we first did this, we weren't sure we were even going to get close to the capacity. Now we find ourselves in a situation where there's more demand, and we're going to have a discussion, hopefully tonight, whether that is expanded or not. But the one thing I'm concerned about is there are precedents across town for hardship exemptions where people don't have a driveway and they've been given one spot. And so to create two hardships, that might have an effect on what we've done elsewhere, and I think we need to look into this. I'm glad you raised this issue and brought it before us, but at least in the short term, I almost feel, I second your motion because I think it's good to discuss it. But I think we almost maintain the status quo and figure out what we're doing with hardships where people don't have a driveway. I think there's a lot of instances where we've only given one hardship permit, and maybe we'll decide that that's going to change in the future. I don't know, but it seems to me that even if it's a matter of a month or two, if you maintain the program that you're in and let us figure out what we're doing, we can figure out whether this belongs as two hardships or the way it is now. And so I probably would vote against the motion, not because it may be the right thing to do later on, but I just don't know the effect on other permits we've given.
And I would just say briefly, I would vote for this just because when I was first on the board, the board identified two streets in particular when they were discussing the hardship clause provision, and it was Highland Ave, Lower End Mass Ave, and Paul Revere Road. And traditionally, and strangely enough, in the beginning, I was the ones who was advocating, maybe we shouldn't be doing this because we could have two to four on-street parking requests and approval, which far surpasses the frontage of the house, of the requesting home. But as time played, but I said, I'm willing to go along to see, you know, if that does create hardship, if everyone comes in and asks for four, and that didn't happen on Highland or Paul Revere, and then as an offshoot of that, other streets, but I think if you look at other streets, roads, ways, terraces, paths, places, et cetera, Highland and Paul Revere really are the two that stand out, and I'm comfortable with supporting the motion because of that. But Mr. Hurd?
Yeah. Mrs. DeCoursey brought up a good point about the hardships in that it was always traditionally, you know, we didn't really call it hardship accident. It was just, before there was an overnight parking program, it was just an overnight, the criteria that we had. But I, I think, like I said, I'm fine granting this. I'm going to go ahead and say that you got in about 10 minutes before. The policy might change, so you might have the benefit of that, and I think you've given us some food for thought. And we've always said, you know, publicly, like to the millions and millions watching, that these are, whenever we do these overnight parking, it's a case-by-case basis. So, you know, you know, don't come in and say, "All right, we gave them two, now we get two." You know, we have the discretion to give one, two, or none to any household that comes before us, and I think we have some decisions to make. And you've seen that once we pull the string on overnight parking, we could sit here for five hours and go round and round. And, you know, I think as far as, maybe we should just save this for the later agenda, but, you know, I think the purpose, to the extent that, you know, you were part of the program, or you have neighbors that are part of the program that are concerned about the limitation, I, you know, I think it was always the, we always wanted to have enough to meet the demand without creating an issue, and I don't think we're anywhere near any issues with overnight parking. So I think, you know, our discussion will move towards expanding it. But I'm happy to support it and help you guys out.
Okay. With that, a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey for discussion, and now for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It's a 4-1 vote. Thank you.
Can I ask a point?
And as much as the gentleman from Eversource shook their head that they have no problem listening to a five-hour discussion, we will not do that after your agenda item, but thank you so much for...
Thank you. Could I ask a point or a question then? Since our current, this might be the right venue, forum for asking this question, but since our overnight, no longer called a pilot, program permit expires on June 30th, who do I, who do we talk to about what happens now? That you have made this approval, for which we thank you, and I guess renewing...
Same person that you've been talking to.
And you'll actually obtain your permit through the Treasurers' Office, so we'll send an approval, and it'll be sent downstairs. You'll actually get a permit through the Treasurers' Office.
Fantastic.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We now go to Agenda Item 22. Invite you all forward. Presentation from Eversource Underground Cable Modernization Program. And I want you all to know that we have received and read the very long email thread with Mr. Coppethorne and others over in the Building Department that has led up to this agenda item, so. That would be great. Thank you. Thank you for sitting through our...
Thanks.
And as we know, and what we've received, and the Town Manager has brought us up to speed on, this is a pretty ambitious program, I believe, starting in Woolburn and traversing through several cities and towns, which also includes Arlington. And this is just the beginning of a, I've seen anywhere from a two- to four-year process, but it seems like shovels don't really hit until 26, 27, 28. But I'll leave that to your presentation, so if you could just name an affiliation for the record. Thank you.
Absolutely. So, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board. My name is Jason Wright, Community Relations Representative for Eversource. To my left is Tom Clunin. He's the Project Manager for Eversource. And behind me, we have Miles Lane Kennedy, as well as Ross Doughty from our project engagement team. Again, we're before you this evening to introduce the North Cambridge to Woburn Underground Cable Modernization Project. This project is part of a larger program that we're really undertaking... This project is part of a larger program that we're really undertaking throughout our service territory and the entire state itself to upgrade our aging underground assets. Tom's going to run, Tom is going to run through some slides for us. Feel free to jump in if you have any questions throughout. And again, to your point earlier, for context, we're really in the early stages of this this year. It's our intention to seek the required permits and hopeful approvals with the intention of starting construction in 2028. So all that being said, I'm going to hand it over to Tom to walk through. And any questions?
Thank you, Jason. All right, so we get a handful of slides to go through. I'll talk you through them. Feel free to jump in and ask questions as we go. Otherwise, I'm just going to keep on blabbing and I'll lose my voice at some point. So feel free to jump in. But I'll cover the background and the need for the project. I'm going to cover where we are with the development of the project. It is a long process to get us into construction and then even the construction itself being a six-plus mile route we're proposing here. And then, of course, Jason hit on the timelines. There's a slide towards the end. Then again, we can, we can circle back and usually get some questions around there. But here on Slide 2, so what you see in front of you, this is the existing alignment. The map, it shows it runs, runs through Arlington. This is what's in the streets today. What we are replacing is an existing transmission line as part of this program. So existing here comes up behind St. Paul Cemetery, Waldo Road, there's a park there and jumps on Marathon. Then falls a pretty thorough out there with Broadway, Warren Street, Chestnut, and Mystic, so main route there. Up into Winchester. A few facts just to give you background on the transmitting system itself. So EverSource does own and operate most of the pipe-type cable system. That's a steel housing, oil-insulated cable system we have on this route here. There's two terms there, high-pressure, fluid-filled, which is what we have here. That's the oil insulated again. And there's also a few in the system, gas-filled, just throw that in there for terminology. You don't need to remember any of this. You have the slide deck here. And oftentimes I don't. But as, as part of this underground cable modernization program, the premise behind it is we have asset-conditioned projects. We need to go replace aged assets within our infrastructure. Some of our oldest assets in the system were installed and commissioned back in the late 40s. And then the average lifespan or the average age for the assets in this system is about 50 years right now. And the useful life for these assets is about 40 years. So we have a very large program here. This is one project in that program that we are here before. Forward here tonight to present on. But again, the key behind that is asset condition is really driving the need for this. Next slide, please. So this slide here covers a little more on the need and the scope for the project here. Part of the need, again, we're phasing out this age technology. I mentioned the HPFF pipe-type cable, oil-insulated. We're looking to move into cross-length polyethylene, it's like a plastic jacket, get rid of the old oil system and modernize our cable system technology. We're also, by being proactive and replacing the asset before we get to failure, we're looking to safeguard our system reliability. This circuit itself is a 345 KV circuit, so it's one of our higher voltages that we operate. A big, big transmission leg is part of the ISO New England Regional System here. So it is pretty significant that we do do something to address this here. At the same time, we're modernizing the technology, we're also looking at the future load growth needs. So we're not just looking at what today's loads are, but we're working with ISO New England to look at future load growth and making sure that we build the system in order to support that. We know we have some aggressive climate goals here to go carbon-free and push everything on electricity. So as part of our transmission system, that means we need to upgrade the circuits to be able to carry the load. Otherwise, you're looking at essentially adding circuits. And there's, we know there's limited space to add new additional circuits there. The solutions, just hitting on a few here. So the cross-length polyethylene is more readily available than our existing technology, the HPFF. We can actually get in the larger-sized conductors, again, being able to carry more current, meet those load growth needs. And then we're also expecting we can see improved restoration times. If we did have an incident where we did have a fault, having more readily available technology, we can do carry spares. But the time to get to restoration, not having to deal with the old system, the pressurization, depressurization, repressurization process, that's going to save us some time there if we did have an issue. Location-wise, for where the work would take place, it's going to be on the public right-of-way. Largely city streets is where you'd see this work going on. It's an underground cable system. So the replacement of the circuit requires installation of new parallel path to the existing circuit. You know, there's several large concrete splice vaults that would need to be placed in the roads. Just put that in perspective, the size of them, they're about 30-foot long, eight feet wide, and eight feet tall. So like the size of a school bus. And those to accommodate being able to pull the cable between legs and splice it together. Otherwise, you'd have too high pulling tensions and potentially damage it. So, and then in between those, you have a duct bank system. Essentially PVC conduits connecting the ducts for the cables to be pulled through. Concrete in case we pour concrete afterwards. And configuration there is usually a two-by-three is standard. For six main ducts, the house, the double circuit in there, but you can put it in different configurations depending on, on street availability.
How many of those approximately school-size infrastructure would be in Arlington? Approximately, recognizing it's a construction project, things can change, approximately.
You have about two to three per circuit per mile. So for a double circuit, that's times two. So six times three, 18 potentially at most. But it also depends on the design too, because it's all about the pulling tensions. But typically, they're two to three per mile per circuit.
Thank you, sorry.
Good question. We usually get that one.
Well, I'm Verizon 2222. And if you ever bump into Joe Nolan or Tom May, you can ask them how fun it is. But I am a good person to work with, along with my colleagues. But go ahead.
Awesome.
Trunk senders and mainframes, that's why when I heard you say that. And the vast majority of the work is in Arlington. So we'll talk remediation, mitigation further down.
Yes, as always.
Well, the manager will, sorry, not me. Thank you, sorry.
Prepare for those discussions.
I apologize.
No, no, this is, this is good. This is good. So just the last one on the bottom, we'll cover the schedule there. But we did talk about trying to get to our filing and approvals here this, late this year. And then construction is 28. It's a longer duration construction, about five years of construction. Not all in Arlington, but we do have six-plus miles to go, plus station upgrades that would be phased over at the end. So the heavy civil works is the first 80% of the schedule essentially, before we get to cutovers on the station ends. So this slide here, this covers the line routing process, just for how we got about selecting which route we're going to utilize to replace the asset. So far, I shared with you where the existing route was. We have looked at other routing paths to get down there. So next few slides will kind of get us to where we are today. This one here highlights what we use for our routing process. So first, we start with the study area. And again, we're looking at the corridor between Point A and Point B, which is fixed because we're replacing the existing asset there. And we'll move into identification of universal routes. It's essentially spaghetti on a map. How many different routes can we take to feasibly get where we need to? And then we'll go into, you know, team assessment, solicit stakeholder feedback. What type of fatal flaws do we have with those routes so we can start to screen them out? And types of fatal flaws, design constraints, constructability, operational issues, environmental impacts, permitting rights issues, and stakeholder feedback, conflicting projects, maybe stuff like that, that we didn't have on our radar. The goal of the phase, of course, is to narrow down the routes that we have in front of us. And we'll move into what we call candidate route phase. That's where we actually have a distinct set of routes, not the different variations they'd be able to take, but something that we have to do more of a comparative analysis of each route. That's where we get into route scoring. We actually go out and collect field data. We collect data from available tools and systems in order to route or rank the routes against one another. I'll discuss that criteria for those a little bit in the next slide there. When we get towards the bottom, after we get through the route scoring. So the route scoring itself, it's not the only criteria for getting there. It's a way to do a quantitative assessment that's qualitative feedback that needs to go in there. There's system reliability, cost, other impacts that need to be accounted for. But when we get down to the top two routes from that process, we're doing more of a comparative analysis, looking to advance the engineer and how are we actually going to build these, collect more data, compare the two until we identify our preferred route. Right now, where we are today, we've identified our preferred route. We're kind of bouncing back and forth as we collect more, more feedback here, just to make sure that we solidify that. So you'll see that when we get into the next slides here. This slide here, this gives you a visual just of the progression between the phases here. So on the top left, we have from December 23. I think it's around the first time we reached out to town staff on the project here. This is the, from the universal routes phase. It's more towards the end of it where we've gone through the fatal flaws, presented some of the routes for additional feedback to collect that there. And then as you see from August 24, we've got a smaller set, about four or five routes here, candidate routes, which actually advanced into the scoring phase. So this past year or so, we've been collecting the data in order to do that quantitative comparative analysis there. And then, of course, get into our qualitative. Checkbox here on the right, it's just really covering the stuff from the previous slide. I mentioned before, we're teetering on the preferred and alternative route, just making sure that we're collecting all the data there. So things are progressing there. And then the evaluation criteria for the scoring, the route score and the quantitative, it's actually broken into three different categories. You'll see the criteria in each of them in the next slide. But the natural environment, built environment, and then technical and constructability. Next slide, please. This is the criteria here. So again, the criteria is used in the candidate route phase. Things under the built environment criteria, so residential land use, commercial land use, sensitive receptors. A lot of what you see here is essentially counts along the route. There is some field data as transportation, traffic counts out there that we go measure. There's utility data that comes into this. Actually, we get municipal utility-type records in order to do our assessment on utility congestion, just to make sure that we have a quantitative assessment on, do we have space and stuff in there. Route scoring's, again, it's more the quantitative assessment to make sure that we've accounted for the types of impacts we can. But it's not all-encompassing. It can't capture everything in there. You have to have the qualitative assessment that goes with it to make sure you get the feedback that maybe it doesn't come up with the, with the scoring here. So it doesn't always give you, give you the full picture there. The other items I talked about previously that we also factor in, so system reliability, technical feasibility, environmental impacts, community impacts, stakeholder feedback and cost there. The waitings you see here, you see each of the criteria is weighted. This is based off EverSource's recent experience, factors we see on the route, historical and archaeological resources, we actually, we have pretty low. And you'll see it a lot in the program projects we have here. There's not a lot along these routes that would really change the score in there, so we keep it low. Other ones, we do have high, you know, residential, transportation, utilities, trenchless stuff that's come up a lot for us before that we have seen on the projects that we tend to rate a little higher because we know they'll have a meaningful impact later in the life of the project. So we therefore rank it higher. So it shows up in the quantitative assessment there.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes. So for your criteria, I mean, I imagine that there are elements like under residential land use that you use to get the score for, that will determine that weighting, no?
Not, not the weighting. The weighting is more, we're looking at the route and based off weights we've used in the past for similar projects or areas. That's how we're, we're coming up with the weightings. The actual criteria itself, for residential land use, it's, I believe it's essentially a count of the parcels along the route that meet that criteria. So it's, that's why I say that the route scoring itself, being a quantitative assessment, doesn't give you the full picture.
Yeah.
Like, there could be other community impacts that you can't account for in scoring that you have to, you have to go out and do your outreach to make sure you get that feedback. Or with municipal stakeholders, make sure you get that feedback. So somehow that gets factored into the scoring.
I got you.
Not the scoring, but the assessment.
Right. I asked the question the wrong way. I mean, I understand that the weighting is set. But I was trying to get at the components, I mean, that go into residential land use. And you were hinting at some of those. Is that available somewhere?
All of the route analysis ends up in the petition. So, so, yes, it all becomes a part of that public filing there. I've looked at some of the tables behind it and sometimes it just, it spins me around. But, but yes, you'd have to spend a good afternoon looking at it.
There's often just a lot of knowledge in there. And the reason I ask this is because, like, I mean, we score projects. I do work with the Boston Region MPO. And as we look at the projects, I mean, transportation projects that come before them, we score them too. And we have our criteria, we have the top-level criteria. But then there are the elements underneath that that are just so interesting. So for someone who wants to kind of understand it, you kind of look at that. And so I was just kind of wondering if that was, if that kind of list was available and if it was available.
Yeah, no, no, yes. I mean, all of these become part of the petition documents. So, yeah, there's plenty of examples out there. We've tried to learn, again, I talked about the waitings, how we've made adjustments. We try to learn from what we've learned on projects in real life in the past. Just because the quantitative assessment, it can't, it can't be the only criteria you use to select a route here. It's, there's too many other elements that it can't pick up to. Thank you. Next slide, please. Slide 7. So this is, this is just a comparison of what we have as the preferred and alternative displayed on the map. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this one because I do have another one that shows Arlington specifically. You've probably seen the slide deck there. But just a few things to point out. So the routes are pretty close in length. You can see Point A to Point B. You can see the most direct path is kind of where we're going straight up. There is some technical challenges down in the Cambridge area. And then you also see some geographic constraints here. So the Mystic Lakes, some reservation and green space. But it gives you perspective for when I was talking back when we're going through the universe of routes phase, kind of, kind of how we've selected down and screened to get where we are today.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Just a question on the Arlington route. Actually, I got ahead. But it looks like, maybe I should, did you already go past, you didn't go past the Arlington route?
That's next. Okay. Next slide, please.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Just as, at Elway Brook Parkway and some of the, the existing line, as you mentioned, is going through the park at Waldo Road.
Correct.
This, your preferred route now is to come all the way down Broadway to Elway, and you're not going to go through the park anymore?
No, and actually, that happened, I think, a couple of years ago. We were having some discussions with DCR about utilizing the existing route. We always like to utilize the existing route. In most all cases, it's, it's the most direct path. Just from one of these, we've built the same infrastructure. It's not there. We get a lot of development in these areas. So we actually, we had some challenges there with the environmental permitting. And we ended up, we would have been too impactful to where we are in the green space currently. I think we're right along the little walk-in trail or bike path right there. And in order to replace this, we have to have a parallel circuit. So we'd be impacting more of that to install new before we could retire the old, right? Because we can't just go take the circuit out of service at this point. Because we can't just go take the circuit out of service at this point. So we ended up with working with DCR agreeing that the route we were going to propose, we still have to go get a license permit and grants of location and all that, would be in the Parkway itself. So then there became more technical challenges and crossing at the previous locations. There's not the space to do it in the same area. There's now a park there that wasn't there before Waldo Park, so that's why we're looking at, at the streets.
Yeah, and I think that's a good change, I mean, I just, but I just wanted to clarify that. And if I can, Madam Chair, just one question on, you're talking about the preferred route and ultimately if this gets approved, you're removing the existing line. Does it actually get removed or is it abandoned in place?
No, it's typically will abandon in place, but we do that in a certain manner. So we'll drain the oil, we'll recover the copper scrap that, we'll drain and dry and we'll lay up the circuit. So essentially you'll have a steel pipe there that will be under, typically nitrogen cap on it to be used as a future asset. So I know other old retired lines, we've leased them out, there's telecom circuits in them, so it's, it's another asset. But it doesn't make sense to go install a new circuit, put you through five years of construction and then go demo one after we take it out of service.
Thank you.
Just, just on this one, the only thing I was going to hit here, you guys probably know the streets better than I do, I hope you all do. But the, so the preferred route here follows much of the existing route. The difference, we already highlighted how we, we don't go Waldo Park, we're coming up Broadway. There is trenchless crossing proposed there to get under Elway, so we are looking at that from a technical perspective. The alternative continues up, Elway Brook Parkway, follows Mystic Valley Parkway up into Medford. So a smaller portion coming through here to the town. And you see the lengths in the table, so we get about just over two and a half miles on the proposed or preferred. And we have less than one mile on the alternative route.
And as you go forward, unless you have it tonight as an estimate, the preferred route versus the alternative route, especially where the alternative route is notoriously in flood plain, flood everything, water, whatever. I'm assuming the alternative route, could you say approximately if it's two, three, four times as much as what the cost would be for the preferred route? Or it's much too early to say that?
It's much too early to say that because.
Well, all that, going into, if you have to go to the alternative route with all that flooding area and everything, that will be an additional cost? Or no, I don't know the technology.
I mean, information like that will come into when we go do the design, certain conditions that need to be met in order to safely install the infrastructure there. Will it come out in the cost? Yeah, it should come out in the cost, any, any additional design details we need to do in there. As I mentioned before, when we were on the top two, kind of that inverted chart there, we're, we're teetering back and forth just making sure that we have all the design details there. We've released engineering full bore on both routes. We don't think it's going to shift either one in favor, but we are sorting through some of those details. And the part of that is also the cost estimate, just to make sure that we, again, are comparing as we go along with them.
So as we move forward, obviously probably through engineering, that's where if anyone really wanted to get into the nuts and bolts, the encasing in terms of what the environment is, in terms of preferred versus alternative, alternative route. It's basically the same, but it's just how big of a code has to go underground over that stuff? And I'm just curious in the cost difference, which I know the manager will stay on top of as we get into more conversations in terms of coordinating with projects on all these streets in Arlington, which is what the town wants, but certainly in the past with Ever Source, Centstar, Algonquin Gas down on Sunnyside, certainly wants to come in, come in and, you know, construct their project, but also work in concert with the neighborhood that's in there. And any beneficial improvements that coincide can be made, so, okay. I'll wait till we get further on down in terms of.
Well, just to touch on that too, so we've been meeting with the town staff, town engineer Bill, monthly for, I mean, going back to twenty-three. It hasn't been consistent every month, but just to, just to coordinate.
I know, he missed last month's meeting, but I read the minutes, so.
And, and, you know, like the Mill River Bridge, Mr. River Bridge, Mill River Bridge, Millbrook Bridge, there it is, Millbrook Bridge.
There's a no name, but go ahead, yeah.
Trying to coordinate, coordinate space there to, for the crossing, the new transmission circuit, that's where the existing is. Getting a lot of good feedback actually from John on potential local community groups, transportation impacts that we need to start considering. A lot of that comes up in the next phase as we get into the design and can really flush out what it's going to take to go construct this thing, when we, when we have a detailed design. And also part of that is, is getting out in the street and actually verifying the field utilities. So we've been talking about getting out here and doing test pitting this summer along the route, so that we can verify what's in the ground. And again, de-risk as we get closer to construction so that we have, we have known, known utility locations, so.
And I digress, digress, and I'm a thousand percent in favor of this project because it's just going to make everything better for the end user, which other resident businesses in the town, as well as extended communities outside of Arlington. So I'm not trying to bluster on it, so, sorry, I digressed off.
I mean, it's needed to maintain the system reliability. We have an aged asset, we have to do something about it, there has to be a solution, and this is what we're proposing. Next slide, and again, this one just covers the schedule here again, I think we hit on a lot of this here. The outreach is going to continue throughout the project. We do want to start moving from the municipal officials, start talking to a lot of the community-based organizations. So we've been working with the town staff to make sure we identify some of the key groups to go talk to. But that is something that we want to do, leaving the meeting here today. Looking at public open houses likely this fall, I think September, October timeframe. Talked about engineering's heavy right now, working through the design on the top two routes here. And the need to get out there and verify utilities in the field via test pitting here this summer. State and local permits, end of the year, we're going to get our petition filed here and then start a construction looking at twenty-twenty-eight, wrapping up in.
God bless you.
Full circuits in service in twenty-thirty-three.
Yes, and just in terms of what you're doing later this year, so the initial, what you're filing later this year is with the energy facility siding board, is that?
Correct.
And is that the major approval that you need to?
That, that's the major approval. There's, there's other MIPA filings we're going to, we're going to need to have that we're, we're working early as, as we can. And then most of the other permits are going to fall out after that, but those are the key ones, yeah.
Right, and, okay, and is there anything like from ISO New England as far as the need for this? And I'm sure there is, like, this program, if people wanted to research it further in terms of increasing reliability?
Yeah, there was.
No, I was going to, I think here, you know, Tom said, say what, I would encourage anyone that's interested in this and the future low growth forecast and whatnot. As part of the mass climate bill that was passed, we, all utilities were required to file what's known as an electric sector modernization plan. And it's a pretty, it's a hefty document, it's about seven hundred pages, but there's also an executive summary. And that document itself really entails projects not only specific to the town of Arlington, but also quite literally statewide. So it's a roadmap for us to help get to that, those twenty, fifty goals for all cities and towns to, you know, help with their clean energy decarbonization goals and mandates, really. I'm happy to provide a copy of that to the, to the, to the board for their review.
I was going to say something else, though. ISO New England, we did, we did actually have a presentation, I think back in late February, to the planning advisory committee pack on an update to the program, some, some key project to the program. One of them is this one, it does meet a, does meet a needs assessment that they're doing for twenty-thirty-three. So it is, it is on the list as one of the ones we need to go after.
Thank you.
And the last slide here, this is just the contact information here. So, you know, we do have a number of ways for the public to get ahold of us. You know, we have hotline, project email and webpage, QR codes active there that get you there. And then you can also subscribe for email updates. There'll probably be few and far in between until we get closer to construction, but nonetheless, it is available there. And then Jason, again, his contacts up here from community relations and Miles and Ross here, so.
And is, for you, Tom, is it Tom?
Tom, yes.
Coonan, or are you Thomas dot Coonan?
I'm Thomas dot Coonan, yeah.
Okay, good, that's the one I want.
He could share my, he could share my contact.
You're my backup, go ahead.
You got it, I'm here.
Sorry. Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for the presentation. Just kind of a higher level question, going back to the very beginning where you referenced that. Among many other things, this will increase your capacity to help meet the increasing, the common was net zero.
Yeah.
In carbon goals through electrification. And I'm curious, does this, obviously this would, would increase circuitry and capacity for transmission, but does, to what extent does it also accommodate additional inputs into the grid from renewable sources such as particularly solar at various scales or even renewable wind?
This specific project won't address that need because this one is going transmission station to transmission station. There's, there's other projects within Ever Source where we look at future load studies where offshore generation may come in. I'm not as familiar or involved with those projects, those are more, I think, interconnected projects, but yes.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
That, that is something that Ever Source is looking at too, so. I just, yeah.
Yeah, that's fair.
These, these program projects here, they're strictly asset condition programs, so everything that, where you hear underground cable modernization program or UCMP, it's looking at the asset condition of the line.
But it does increase, it does increase capacity, though?
We are looking at the same time, yeah, I mean, that's, it's just, it's, it's the right thing to do. We're out here replacing the, the aged asset, we need to be tying that need also into what the future load needs are. So we're looking at it from, you know, what upgrades to the transmission system lines need to support that.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
From a regional perspective.
Right, because we certainly need interconnect, we need other infrastructure to add the inputs, but we, we need the transmission because, you know, the town's just moved its high school and its DPW building's all electric now. So, and that's in respect for, direct response to the town's carbon, carbon goals. So, so yeah, I'm glad to hear that and I would encourage you to keep that focus on, even if it is transmission, that that capacity is really important.
Everybody's trying to move fast and we're trying to keep up with the demand, so.
I don't envy you.
Before I go back to the board, Mr. Feeney?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you gentlemen for the presentation. I've had the benefit of hearing much of this previously. I did want to confirm one thing, and that is, were we able to locate the real estate under the Mystic Street Bridge for the future installation? Just because I know we're getting underway with that project now, and I wanted to confirm.
Yeah, so I think we have a check-in with Bill possibly later this week, if not, it's next week. There's two options on the table. I think we're close, but we have to have the next meeting with, with Bill and the design team just to make sure it's there.
Great, thank you. And just bring that up because we are obviously underway with our infrastructure project there. And then secondly, I note here in the project timeline, some open houses scheduled for this fall. And I just wondered what form those typically took and if you needed the town or town hall in any way to help facilitate those?
Yes, and I, Miles, keep me honest here, but I believe we're looking to, or we may have confirmed the meeting space on the first floor here as far as the typical forum. Very casual, boards, these will set up around, people that come in that are interested can, you know, walk from one station to the other, Ever Source personnel on hand to answer questions. So it's not, not a formal presentation like this by any means, it's supposed to be, meant to be kind of a welcoming environment where people that are, have questions can come in and speak to the appropriate SMEs.
Thank you, and I would just add to that for the record that a project of this nature and such size, scope and magnitude and touching such a large portion of the community, this is something where we would trigger our own communication systems to let our residents know about this. Obviously, we have a unique ability to get in touch with our folks in a number of different ways. And this would be one of those instances where I would intend to use the town's communication channels, though it's not necessarily for a town project, but to facilitate making sure that our residents are aware of such a, really quite a massive undertaking.
Okay. Move receipt by Mr. Helmut, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hurd, any further, Mr. Feeney?
And I just had one more question, thank you for indulging me, Madam Chair. I just wondered if there were any other formal, formal check-ins required in front of this board in terms of what should be on our radar? Or is that only when we get to considering grants of location or some other instrument?
Yeah, I mean, I would say we're always welcome, we're always willing to come back and, and update, whether that's, you know, six months from now, one month or a year. We obviously, we want to be cognizant of the board's time, certainly, but sort of, make sure we have, you know, something concrete to, to offer an update on, but we can certainly circle back. I know we meet monthly, again, happy to come back as an update is needed, all right, the board's discretion.
Very good, thank you.
I would say probably, besides reading the monthly minutes of your meetings, which are very interesting, at least a, if not a six-month check-in, a year, until we actually, you know, in terms of the planning stage. And then after that, once you stop, put shovel into, well, it's not shovel underground, but you know what I'm saying. There's probably, if you appear before that then board, there's probably going to be a big question issue that needs to be resolved versus anything else, so.
Expected.
But I'll leave that to a future chair, unless I drag you gentlemen back in one more time before I'm no longer chair. And we do appreciate all the presentation and the backup documentation and, as well as being able to answer our questions. And I think you can tell by the questions that we all have different areas of knowledge and expertise. And we by far will never ask any question just for the sake of asking it. It's truly because it's something we, you know, have a little bit of knowledge about, want to learn a little bit more and it helps us better. Not that we give that level of detail to each and every resident of Arlington, but as you traverse through Arlington over the coming years, I think you'll see and will be impressed by the amount of expertise that our citizens here in Arlington have, who are far smarter than I am. So, believe it or not, a lot of, whatever I extract from you all and the two gentlemen behind you, really will go to good use. So, on a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote, thank you so much, nice to meet you all.
Thank you for your time.
I was interested in that discussion, more than what I had to say.
You too. And I'm going to do one last call, but I'm assuming Alex Dorsen has not, they have not presented themselves, so we'll just carry that over to our future agenda. In terms of an appointment, we'll go to agenda item twenty-three, which we already had a little bit, so we maybe have circumvented some of that. The discussion and approval, parking and policy regulations. I will speak last, I do have two areas that I think my colleagues will cover in terms of making motions to do whatever, if not, then I'll do cleanup. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so if you can, I'll go to the, the parking policy, the link, me from notice agenda or wherever you get your links to materials in, go to the bottom of page seven, you know, I'm going to start there with some items for us to discuss. But I mean, if you go there, I'll just quickly add, so when we last had the discussion, then we decided to make the pilot permanent. We had ninety-three permits that had, well, we issued ninety-three permits, and in the two months since, we've issued thirty-two more. Not quite sure why the rush, do you have a sense?
I think just more people are aware of it.
Okay, great, and I know that in one case, the person wanted to know that it was going to be permanent before taking out a permit, you know. The split was roughly the same, as we've been seeing, you know, in the previous assessments of the, of the permits. By that, I mean between East Arlington and non-East Arlington. So the thirty-two seventeen was, were in precincts one through seven, and fifteen were in precincts eight through twenty-one, which gives us a percentage overall of fifty-one percent, you know, in the east, and forty-nine percent in the rest of town. So that's just some background, you know, so.
I'm sorry, Mr. Diggins, I'm just trying to locate this in the materials, where are we exactly?
Oh, I was just giving, so I was just giving you some stats, meaning.
The data's not in there.
Oh, the data's not in the.
No, it's not, no.
Okay.
Yeah, right, right, I can send that to you if you want.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, sure, I mean, I did, I did some calculations, and as you probably know, you know, a lot of the effort then goes into making that presentable to people, so that they're not trying to figure out like.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing it here, yeah.
Sure, sure, I'll be happy.
Yeah, my apologies.
No, 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 it's totally fine, totally understandable, and I sent it out in previous discussions, meaning. And so, so the questions, as I see, that we. So, so the questions, as I see that we need to address are, first off, how many more permits do we want to issue? We're at 125. You told me that there are 15 people?
Twelve to fifteen, is that right, Ashley?
Correct.
I mean, Ms. Mar, sorry.
But, that's okay. But the list is ever going.
Right, right.
It's not.
Right.
Every day, we're getting a few extra.
Right. So, we can certainly add that number to the document, and then anytime we want to change the number, then we'll have to change the document. In any case, we're going to have to have a discussion here if ever we want to change the number. My initial recommendation was that we go to 150. Well, my, actually, my initial recommendation was to do nothing until we see how the new trash cans roll out, you know. But when I had a quick discussion with Mr. De Corsi at a meeting, he was on the, well, your feeling is that we should increase sooner rather than later, and it's really a matter of what that number is. And so, I could certainly go with 150 in the near term, and then maybe if the trash can rollout goes smoothly, we can then boost it up to 175, 200, depending on maybe other factors. Another thing to consider is we had taken out, well, there was, there was a group at it amongst the chair and the boarded men, and the boarded men has recommended that we take out the hardship component for the overnight parking. My feelings are that we keep it because I feel that that hardship is different than the hardship that we encountered here. The hardship we encountered here were people who had no parking at all. The nondiscretionary is for those who just want to have overnight parking on the street. You know, and we don't really even ask them why. So, let's say we have a situation where someone is in East Arlington and is tandem or inline parking, and they just don't want to deal with the hassle of having to shift cars around. They're willing to pay. Well, they are willing to pay, but they can't pay, you know, as much. Do we then give them a hardship? And so, that to me is what that hardship, or I should say, it is hardship, but essentially it's a binary. Either you can afford it or you can't. You get it for full price, or you get it for nothing if you qualify for other benefits. So, we need to discuss that. The other is the annual reapplication. So, we had a little bit of a discussion about that already. Is it that people who already have the permit are inline first? And so, if you scroll down in that document to page eight, there's the second bullet point about the permits must be renewed annually. Those who have overnight parking permits must reapply by December 15th in order to guarantee that they will receive overnight parking permit in the following year if their application is in order. So, all of the applications will be processed on a first-come, first-served basis, so if you didn't have a permit, then you're now on a first-come, first-served basis. And then when it comes to the renewal the following year, you have until the 15th of December to determine, let us know that you want to renew for the following year. So, it's either that, or you just say to everyone, it's first-come, first-served. I would recommend that we allow people who have a permit to be in the queue first because there are people who just will not utilize the program if they feel that they can't get the permit ongoing basis, because I know one case where a person is already like paying someone else for a parking, the ability to park in a space, and if they feel that they can't continue to have access to the permit, then they won't utilize it. So, a couple other things. Go ahead.
Can we, like, tackle the, it's like a lot, you know, can we, like, kind of like go through these?
Yeah, well, I was just laying them, I was laying them all out, and then I was thinking, I think we could circle back to them and take them all one at a time, but just in case there are some linkages that you want to think about as you make decisions. So, it's just two more. So, the other is, I lost my place here. Oh, okay. So, we have places like the Artemis and 882. The Artemis has parking that people pay for. I think it's either like $100 a month, or it could be significantly more. We had one case where I think they asked for a permit, but because they weren't, they weren't like adjacent to the street, we didn't give it to them. Is that correct?
I don't fully recall.
Okay, I think, I think I discussed this with Britton, you know, and so, and so I think we ultimately did not just gave, give them a permit because they weren't really on Mass Ave, but it did bring up this issue, if you are in a building that does have parking, but you have to pay for it, do you use our program, which will be significantly less as a way to get around that? And I think that might be what's going on at 882. And so, I haven't done the investigation to see what the parking situation is there, but maybe I can direct this question to the town manager. When we do developments that have affordable housing, affordable inclusionary, and so you have a unit or two that's affordable, if they have parking on site and they charge for the parking, do they give the people who are getting the affordable units a discount on the parking?
Thank you for your question, Mr. Diggins. I'm not personally familiar with whether or not they do that, or whether or not our zoning by law would require them to do that.
Yeah, I'm impressed that the zoning by law doesn't require it at all, you know, and so, so it's just something you might want to take into account when it comes to the purpose of the overnight parking permit. And the last thing is, what do we do with people who don't get their street, their car, their vehicles off the street when there's just no emergency? Right now, we say that they, we may revoke their permit. It's really a matter of may versus shall. And if it's going to be a shall, is it one strike and you're out? And if it's not going to be one strike, then how many strikes? And what is the burden on whatever entity is going to track that, you know, in order to track it? And so, was that question clear to you, Ashley?
I don't know.
Yeah, no problem. So, it's a question of, so if they don't take their car off the street in a storm emergency, right now, we've written it to say that we may revoke their permit. Because that gives us some discretion as to whether we revoke it or not. It's a question, do we want to maintain that discretion, or do we want to take it away and say, well, you will lose your permit? And is it going to be one strike, or is it going to be more than one strike?
I mean, I guess that would be ultimately up to the board. If you guys would.
Okay.
That's up to you guys.
Yeah, well, it's a matter of then what kind of, how hard would it be for you to track that?
We haven't had any instances yet where a car hasn't been moved, so I don't see it as a problem yet.
All right. Want to take it piecemeal, then? I mean, the first one is probably the easiest one. Mr. Hurd, did you want to start off?
I don't know. I guess I would just run all my thoughts through. This is going to be a long discussion. As far as number, I always, I think we said at 125, just see what it was. I don't, not that I don't think incremental is a good idea. I think we should make sure there's enough, that there really shouldn't be a waiting list. Like, I just, if there's someone that wants to use it, and if there ever becomes a point where we're like, oh, God, that's just too much, then we can revisit it. But I'd rather set it much higher, so it's just, then you don't have to worry about the renewal, which, and I mean, my thought, I'm kind of jumping around because there's so many points, but, I mean, on the renewal, I think it is a good idea that if you have it, then you're first in line, because someone might buy a car, because now we have this program. But I think we should set it, the number, where we're comfortable that it can accommodate anyone that looks for, like, if we're at 125 and there's 12 people on the waiting list, and we go to 150, you know, a month and a half from now, we might not have enough permits. So, I'd rather set it at 200 or 250. That's just my, my thought. Sorry, I forgot all the points.
No. That would be useful.
Well, what, why don't we?
I had thoughts about every one of them, but.
Mr. De Corsi?
So, maybe just, given the hour, maybe to streamline this a little. I mean, I think it's important to do the number here, and I think it's important for Ms. Mar, if we have consensus that if you have a permit now, it's a notification thing. You don't have to get back in line, because I think there's a number of people that may have given up a paid spot, and so, I think the only thing limiting us is the number of spots in a municipal lot, because we're tying a permit to the municipal lots. I'd be comfortable with going to 200 as well, because I know we can accommodate 200 and maybe see it. I'd be comfortable with allowing people who have existing permits to notify the town by a certain date that they want to renew and not be at risk of losing their property. The other ones, I think, may need a little bit more discussion, because of the whole hardship issue as far as taking that off, I think, I think we need to think that through a little bit more.
And maybe we could discuss that at our goals meeting as we go through. But I do agree on the first two things, whether we raise the number. And I would just say, just from an ordering and money standpoint, it's, every hundred is another big, you have to order them in hundreds, and it's the hit, the hit. So, I would definitely say 200 and no more, and if we went beyond that, then it would be 300, because we have to order them in increments of 100. But anyway, so.
Yeah, and I'd say on the apartments, 882, Mass Ave diagonally across from the high school, and Artemis, which is the Myrack development, I think we need to look into that a little bit more. I mean, the intention of this program wasn't for someone who has available parking at $100 a month to be able to get cheaper from the town.
Cheaper, right.
But we've got to spell that out a little bit in terms of tying that into apartment properties, maybe. Anyway, that's just briefly, but I think it's important to address the first two tonight.
And then the last three we'll do at the, after we set our future meetings. That'll be at our goals meeting with the town manager. So, I'm going to take that, if that's okay, Mr. De Corsi's motion to increase it to 200 and to maintain having existing permit holders, but with a date, because I have been in the office where someone, I've seen it twice now, they came in, and you were there one day, and they said, oh, I wasn't getting one, because I thought, you know, I wouldn't get tickets anymore, and I did, so it's cheaper for me to now do that. So, I do agree that there should be, you know, you have preference if you're a previous, but there is a date by which, yes, Ms. Mar?
So, I just have two comments. In our parking policy, as it stands now under the permit, it states that only two permits will be granted for each apartment building, and those permits are granted on a first-come, first-served basis. Now, does that apply to 882? Does that apply to Artemis? Now, there's a lot of apartments in 882, and quite a few in the Artemis. Are we limiting Artemis to only two, and 882 to only two?
Yeah, that's a future discussion.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, in our policy also, it says by December 15th, you have to let us know if you're going to be renewing for the new year, so.
And that's a good date for January. Mr. Hurd?
Very good question. Does the sticker still say pilot on it?
No, we have ordered new stickers that now say program.
Well, because that, you know, like.
And the ones we ordered are from July to December. And then in the new year, maybe this will change, but you'll have to purchase for the whole year, and that might be a different, you know, starting January 1, it would be on a yearly basis instead of.
Six months, yeah.
Oh, can I get a second to Mr. De Corsi's motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hurd. Okay. Mr. Helman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very much on board with the motion regarding the renewal process. I think if you have a permit, you need to be given a clear first, right of first refusal or, you know, opportunity to have that. Certainly, a deadline is reasonable. It reminds me a little bit of town meeting members running for reelection. They get first crack up to a deadline, you know, and then, and then, then we open it up, but I very much support that. I think as a matter of process, I, and I was out of town, but I did keep looking. I didn't see this document posted until pretty late, so I didn't have a chance to review it until today, and I'm just now realizing that what I thought was a red line that showed all the changes is not really. I think there are new sections in here that are not redlined. So, I don't, if we're voting on the parking document, I would rather not do that tonight because I don't know what I'm voting on.
I think the parking as a whole needs to be more so. I think we should focus on the overnight, if that's okay with the board.
Well, yeah, but I understand that some of the, some of the policy changes we're talking about, the overnight program, which I want to help with, you know, are reflected in this document. So, I would, I want some clarity that what we're voting on is the policy, but not necessarily approving changes to this document at this, at this time, fine. Regarding the number of permits, I think we may have the votes for 200. I am not personally comfortable with that, and I'll have to decide whether to vote yes or no on this. I've heard from two residents fairly recently who are strenuously opposed to expanding the program. They happen to live in the same street. I think they may be, and I looked up, I actually mapped all the permits myself in Google Maps because nobody else had done that, and it was useful to see a wide distribution across town, but I was also able to see that it was, you know, there was a nearby single permit, so that may be a one-off situation. I guess my point is, we can't, you know, I very much want to help people who need the help. That's the purpose of the program. I am personally not convinced that we have made enough of an effort to solicit feedback from the town at large about how the program is working. And I know that overnight parking is an issue about which Arlington will never have a consensus, you know, so I understand that, and I'm certainly not suggesting we put this on a ballot question because we've been down that road a long time. 200 to me feels like a large jump, given that we have not done any outreach to say the select board is asking for town feedback specifically about your experience with this program, would, you know, how do you feel about expansions? And I'm not sure how to do that, but, you know, the batching of the orders, I think we can probably manage that one way or the other. I'd be more comfortable with 150. If we have the votes for 200, I certainly don't want to get in the way, especially given the late hour, but that's what I'm, what I'm feeling.
Okay. Mr. De Corsi?
Yeah, and I think we're going to be talking about this at our goal session. My concern in the short term is accommodating the 10 to 15 people who are on the list. I'm fine, I feel like I'm comfortable with 200, but if to have consensus across the board, we go to 150 and revisit it later this summer, I'm happy to do that as well. So, I don't know if other members just want to go right to 200, but I'd be happy to have five of us to go at 50, 150 with the understanding, we may go higher, given the comfort level that others may, others have.
Are you okay with that amendment?
I mean, I would prefer, I'll reiterate that I would prefer more. If the motion's 150, then I'll vote for 150. But I think once you add them in, and then this new, you know, this trend where more and more people are asking for it, and I get these reasons that people oppose it, but I just think we've created this, I don't want to call it asset or some, you know, where it's like my neighbor gets to do it and I can't, and, you know, again, if it becomes out of hand and all of a sudden 1,000 people show up one day at the select board's office, then at our next meeting, we just, and I think we've been clear with, from the start on this, even for where we put a policy where you get first crack to auto-renew, we might come here on a Monday and say, wait, getting rid of the policy completely, and everyone will have to deal with that because it's our discretion to do it. I just, for me, I think 150, we'll be hearing about a month and a half that there's a waiting list again. But if the motion changes, changes to 150, then I'll, I'll vote for 150.
Mr. Helman?
What is, what is our ultimate capacity of this for town lots? How high could we go in the future?
I think it's around 300.
I think it's around 300, too.
Okay, all right. Well, I mean, I would, I would vote for 175. This is feeling like a.
It's turning into an auction.
Well, you know, I think that gives, that gives some headroom. I don't want to be back here in a month and a half. I do want to be back here fairly soon. That's part of my reasoning behind being a little bit stingy with it, is that, you know, I want, I personally want some time to explore what the objections maybe look like. Because I have heard from some folks, um, and not just this recent contact as well, so, you know, I just want to make sure we have the full picture. And, you know, maybe provide an opportunity to the board to hear that.
In the interest of.
I'd, I'd be willing to.
That, that sounds like a reasonable compromise.
Okay, so on, on, and Mister Hurd's an amenable to that on a motion by Mister Decorse. To increase to one seventy-five and to have, um, existing, uh. The existing date of December fifteenth for existing permit holders, um, uh, seconded by Mister Hurd, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those oppose unanimous vote, and I promise, and I've been meeting with the manager and Ms. Mar on our goals. Um, we have three subjects, this is one of them, and, but now as we streamline them, there's some things I can take off too.
There'll be a four hour.
That's good, we're trending towards a lot of, uh, non-unanimous votes today.
Um, that we go to agenda item twenty-four, Thorne Place, Mass DEP appeal, Mister Decorse.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll try to keep this brief, given, given the hour, but I, when we last had an update. I believe it was just before the site visit that was going to take place, um, at the Thorne Place property, that site visit took place. On May twenty-eighth, Representative Environmental Analyst from DEP, um, conducted the site visit. There were representatives of the applicant, Mister Morgan from the town, at least three members of the Conservation Commission were there. There were representatives from the neighborhood and the Arlington Land Trust that were there, and as is the applicant's prerogative. They don't have to, they have to allow the Conservation Commission members from the town onto the site, they don't have to allow everybody else. Um, and they chose not to allow a number of people who, who were there in attendance. Um, the analyst is reviewing the request for a superseding order of conditions from the applicant. In thinking about this, and I did talk to the chair about this and, and gave this a lot of thought in terms of. Would it make sense for the board to send a letter to DEP, um, we're not necessarily a party, but given. The procedural posture of this case where there was not an approval granted, but because of the deadlock, there wasn't a decision. I felt it was in our interest to send a letter outlining, basically summarizing what the reasons. The commissioners or the commission members who voted against this, what the reasons that they gave. But also, we have a unique situation here where the land trust came to us in March of twenty-four. Asked for our permission to install wells at the edge of the property within the town right of way. Well, it turns out that those wells have come up with measurements that conflict with the calculations that the applicant submitted. As part of their, um, as, as part of the process before the Conservation Commission. And those discrepancies were part of the reason why two members of the commission voted against it, so I think we're in a unique position. To let the DEP know what we're made aware of, that we support the ultimate outcome from the Conservation Commission, which was. It, it was a no action, but really was a denial because there weren't enough votes and to respectfully request. That she consider the, the reasons those commission members gave, but also the call for more testing. That experts, um, that appeared before the Conservation Commission on behalf of the Arlington Land Trust submitted. Um, both to DEP and at the Conservation Commission process, because. The, the key issue here is what is the estimated high groundwater level at that site, okay? And there's a difference of opinion and there are calculations from experts. From the Arlington Land Trust that show that that level should be higher, if that's level's higher. It's likely the stormwater management system will not work, um, if, if approved, so it's, it's a critical issue. It's an issue we've been talking about since this was first proposed in two thousand fifteen. I apologize for the late arrival of the draft, but what I would suggest, if board members are comfortable, I'd make a motion. That the chair send a letter to DEP this week that is consistent with what is here, laying out. What happened at the Conservation Commission, what we did in terms of allowing the wells and requesting. That the DEP analysts consider the materials.
Is there a second?
It's all moved.
Mister Hurd?
Oh.
Second.
Well, I didn't know if that was the motion or a request for the board to make a motion, but.
Yeah, I, I just went for it, second or third depending.
And I, I just want to let everyone know that, uh, Mister Decorse, this is his blood swipe in, in words, um. And was working on it, including up until today, so, um, I, one of the benefits of having not only the knowledge you have on being involved in this as a. Regular person, a neighbor, but also as an attorney and others, um, this is his work here that culminated today. Um, and I am appreciative of it, Mister Helman?
I, I need, I need to second that, um, I did have an opportunity to review the draft late this afternoon and I think it's exceptional. And it, I think we are very fortunate that Mister Corsey just has taken this project on as kind of the tip of the spear for the select board over the last few years, but. In a way that's very open with us, it's been participatory, but I think eh, eh, that his knowledge of this is, is so deep and I think really hit the nail on the head that. That we, the select board did permit these test pits, eh, these additional pits, and they came up with important data that we feel is not being. Uh, taken into consideration, so I'm delighted that this letter, um, that you will authorize and finalize and authorize will be going forward.
Okay, um.
Uh, Tony Cunningham, I think that's.
Yes, sorry, Tony Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just to follow up on Mister Helman's point and Mister Decorse's letter. Um, this issue relating to the groundwater, which, which the select board had a role. And raising that now could prompt the DEP under the applicable statute to request additional information from the applicant. So I'm not saying that's what they would do, but under chapter one thirty-one, section forty, uh, they could. Request the applicant provide them more information on the groundwater issue, and that could extend the timeline when they're looking at the issue of whether to issue the superseding order.
Okay, and the other reason I'm really appreciative of this is, um. With what DEP has now with the appeal, not surprisingly, the representations. From the appellant, um, were the two members who voted in favor of the project and, um. They didn't have anything in paper or written form, why the two who didn't vote for this, um, uh, Conservation Commission. Um, and this also takes care of that, besides the well issues, so that, that they have, you know, the reasoning of the pro and the con. Um, and, and I think that's also, uh, it's Mister McCor- Decorse, Decorse he does, so. Um, with that, on a motion by Mister Decorse, seconded by Mister Hurd, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those oppose unanimous vote, we now go to the housing overlay study, uh, Mister Helman?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll try to keep this brief, uh, and I appreciate the chair's indulgence, as she know we have a full agenda, but, uh, I know that some of the other. Appointees, uh, appointing bodies for this have taken action, so I'm glad that we are right on time with that. But the select board does have, uh, one seat on the Affordable Housing Overlay Committee that was created by town meeting. Um, last, um, last month, and, uh, so my question, I think, for the board is just what our process, what the board's desired process. For our applicant would be, I know that in the past, uh, sometimes a subcommittee has been appointed of two board members. So that's one question, do we do it that way or a different way, does, would the board want to offer guidance about whether we open, do a, a call for applicants broadly? Or, or something different? Um, and the other thing I would offer is that although, um, I have some experience with the topic generally by virtue of being a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. Trustees, the, the board designated that, um, I don't know for sure that this would be a conflict, but I want to make the board aware that if I were to be. Uh, because I brought this up, if I were to be tasked with, with the responsibility, I'm willing to do it, but I want to be clear that I would also be. Likely involved in the other bodies, that the trust funds, uh, selection process for an additional member. So, um, and I, you know, I have not given our turn to Cunningham eh, any prior warning in this, for which I apologize, but if, you know, if that would be a conflict, I would. That I would step away from, I think the board could consider that, otherwise I think it's certainly at least a disclosure.
Okay, and Mister, did I see Mister Hurd and then Mister Diggins? Mister Diggins and then.
No, they've come to me last, always.
Did you have your hand up?
I mean, I was just gonna suggest we designate two people. Have a call for applications and that, such, like Mister, me and Mister Corsey have done this for the Zone Board Appeals. We take applications, we interview the, the people that, that, uh, are interested and make a recommendation to the board.
Okay, motion by Mister Hurd.
I think sometimes when multiple names come to the full board, it gets a little awkward, so. I think the, you know, two-person subcommittee with one recommendation to the board, to the full board makes sense. I mean, it's gotta be a process, we have plenty of select board designees for committees.
And, um, I just have, um, just a question on that, if you, I know the moderator and one other committee has a date of June twentieth. For them to submit to, um, for, if it is a subcommittee of two. Um, I'm guessing that it should be no later than June thirtieth.
I would think, yeah.
So, but it's two, June twentieth, probably too ambitious since we're just voting on it tonight. But June thirtieth would be okay, maybe, if that's a weekday, okay, I'm sorry, Mister.
I mean, also, the real deadline would just be processing it in time for the board's July meeting.
Okay, all right.
So, which, we, have we said that yet?
Well, that's the next agenda.
But this is theory theme for the night, is that we're getting ahead of ourselves, so.
Yeah, yeah, um.
I no longer have a question, and that's fine, that's the nice thing about waiting, I no longer have a question.
Oh, you're no longer, okay, um, uh, I certainly would, would say, um. Mister Helman should be on the, on the subcommittee, there is no conflict because ultimately it's a majority of the board that, um, will make the decision. Um, is there anyone that would like to join Mister Helman on that committee, Mister Hurd? Um, so.
It's all wrapped up.
Mister Hurd, Mister Hurd's motion, um, does somebody have a calendar in front of them, what, what is June, what's the, the last day that's a day in, in June? Is it the thirtieth?
Yes, and that's on Monday.
June thirtieth's a Monday.
Okay, so, um, is a second to Mister Hurd's motion to have a subcommittee of Mister Helman and Mister Hurd to, um. Work with the select board office to post the. Request for people to submit their interest to the select board designate position by June thirtieth, is there a second?
Second.
By Mister Decorse, did I sum that up correctly?
Just, just a question before you go to, I just want to, uh, state that I received. An expression of interest from someone who knew the board had a, an appointment, um, and I just want to know if, if. The board, if I could send it to the subcommittee members, or eh, would you prefer that the, the, the person resubmit to the subcommittee, I mean, it doesn't.
No, I think that's fine.
Okay, all right, so I, I will, I will send that along.
Send it to us?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, on a motion by Mister Hurd, seconded by Mister Decorse, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those oppose unanimous vote, we go to future select board meetings, I have July to November, but. Just for, for a quick discussion, um, and I think I included the correspondence from the town clerk, um. If it's possible, if we could just, um, look at our calendars, recognizing it's subject to change, but if we could do it all the way out until April. Um, traditionally, when I first got on the board, there really was no vote for, it was just always second and fourth Monday of every month. Except for, you know, once in July, once in August, and they all knew the second meeting in December wasn't a heavy, heavy working one. Um, but if we could maybe go through and if we could go up to April, um. Especially set, setting the election date, and then once we do set the election date, we know what the following Monday reorg meeting is and stop there, if that's okay, now, I'll. I'll go slowly, month by month, and then if anyone, um, has a.
To April of next year?
Yeah.
That, that would be a record for.
I know, but it, it also helps honestly town staff, I'm not gonna put the manager on the spot, but I think if I did, it'd say, oh no, that'd be much better, well, like. If, you know, especially like when it gets to a certain point, the end of December, and you're gonna lose maybe some of your days if you already know what meetings are, but. If we could, just go out to there, and it's subject to change.
I'm saying, but I have no idea what my schedule is gonna be.
Yeah, and, but, and we have Zoom too, we have the Zoom feature, and I would say for the July meeting, um, there will be an agenda item. Um, with the town manager, with the timeframe that we have, that if, for some reason, I'm hoping everybody can make it, whatever date we say. Set five people in person, if not, if, um, something came up, God forbid, but you, you could zoom in for that one agenda item, that we have five people to vote. But let, let's move forward as we can, so July, we need to set one meeting, um. I know I'm going away, I'm trying to pull up my calendar, I'm so tired, where the heck is it, there it is, July, um. I know I cannot do the fourteenth, so, um, twenty-first?
Works for me.
Okay, July twenty-first, then August, I can do anything, can anyone say a date?
I can't do the eleventh.
It's eighteen?
Works for me.
Eighteen, and if I could turn to the manager, if you're not prepared right now, I know we have done in the past a August. Perhaps Thursday meeting, do you have a proposal for a date that might work?
Thank you, Madam Chair, so I checked and at least, uh, it appears last year we did a Monday, but certainly I am open to. Any day of the week, uh, and I think that the, uh, week of the eleventh, uh, really any day that week would.
I'm out that all week.
Okay, uh, perhaps the, uh, week of the fourth then? And again, it doesn't necessarily have to be a Thursday, it could be Monday, Wednesday, it does, really doesn't matter.
Does August seventh, Thursday?
Seventh is good, yeah, I prefer to keep it to Thursday.
August seventh for the, um, goals town manager review with, I think last time we said it, from seven to nine?
No, it was earlier than that, wasn't it?
No, was it?
Yeah, it was earlier.
Okay, whatever it was before, but didn't we have like a two-hour block?
Yeah, so I'm.
So five to seven, whatever it was before, the manager will send out the time.
Five to seven was the possibility of going to nine, as we talk about parking policy.
Okay, we get to September, when, when is town day?
It's gonna be.
Twentieth.
The twentieth, okay, so. Is eight and, is eight and twenty-two bad or, or what?
Twenty-two is Rosh Hashanah.
Okay, fifteen and twenty-nine? Is that okay, okay? Then October. Is it the seventh a holiday?
The thirteenth.
Thirteenth, yeah.
The thirteenth, okay, so we did twenty-nine, thirteen's a holiday, six and twenty?
But that's gonna, the six would be one week after the twenty-nine.
But we can't do thirteen, it's a holiday?
It's fine, well, I'm fine, I'm doing so.
I mean, does someone want to do a different thing besides, besides six and twenty?
That's fine, yeah, I wrote stick with the Monday, then another day of the week.
Okay, wow, what the heck did I just do, okay, November?
Is that a six and twenty, sorry?
Mm-hmm. It's the second, oh no, that's Tuesday, so, what is it, uh, ten and twenty-four?
Just recognize that twenty-fourth's the week of Thanksgiving.
Mm-hmm, is that okay, if it's a Monday before Thanksgiving, okay, and then. Do we want it?
Well, how about the third and seventeenth, would that, that work for folks?
Uh, for November?
Yeah.
Third and seventeenth.
Sure. And then for December, is fifteen and twenty-two?
Fifteen and twenty-two?
Or do you want to do eight and twenty-two, sorry, eight and twenty-two, that's better, okay.
Or, well, so we have the, in November, the, the second meetings are the seventeenth, I mean, so that gives us possibly the first and fifteenth.
Yeah, the only, the only thing is just for gender purposes, it's Thanksgiving the week before, just for the office.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's.
Be better.
Okay, all right.
Eight and, and twenty-two and eight would be better because that's when we'll announce that we're opening the warrant and it's staying open until January thirtieth.
Yeah.
But I'm getting ahead of myself on that.
Yeah, I was just trying to get us out of the week of Christmas, so that's why I was going for earlier, okay, I got it.
And then. January, um. Twelve and twenty-six?
Mm-hmm.
And these, if something comes up, we can do that, and then February, what is February vacation, the second week?
Uh, third week.
Next is the third week.
Third week, okay, so nine and twenty-three?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not even asking the manager if he's okay with this, I'm sorry.
Because we all, we're all just like, whatever.
And then in March, besides every Monday, it might be a possibility, but I doubt it, can nine and twenty-three be tentatively for right now?
Mm-hmm.
Which brings us to April, when is Easter and is there a Jewish holy day in April also?
So Easter is the fifth.
Yes.
Fifth, okay.
Early this.
Mm-hmm, and is there any Jewish holy days in April?
On a look.
Okay, this is the day of atonement.
Probably means we're gonna be doing the election on the twenty-eighth.
Well, that's kind of where we're really aiming at right now, just trying to figure that out, right?
Yeah.
It's like Passover starts Wednesday, April first.
Okay, so fifth is Easter, Passover starts on the first.
Which is a Wednesday.
Okay, so what if we say the election is the eleventh?
Hmm?
I think the, the, um.
Oh, no.
No, no, I think that, I mean, that is, that is a candidate, I think that it's, the clerk had said the only thing about that is that's close to when, when is town meeting started, is it the twentieth?
Would be the fourth Monday, which would be.
The twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seven.
So does that, so does that leave enough of a gap for finalizing our report and?
Yeah.
Well, no, not a report, no, just the, I, the space between new town, new.
So do you think the twenty-eighth, then, is better?
Yeah, twenty-eighth.
I think the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
So we'll say the.
The election.
Election twenty-eighth, and the reorg meeting is the thirtieth.
Just to give more time for new town meeting members to sell.
And then the first meeting would be the sixth, because it would be the first Monday after the election would be the sixth.
No, the first Monday after the election would be the thirtieth.
Be early.
Sorry, March thirtieth.
Thirtieth, yeah, and why don't we stop there?
Okay, so that would put the election on March.
Twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
Nothing wrong with a shorter election season, huh? Yeah.
That's all right, everybody under the sun will be running thanks to my Article forty vote or warrant, whatever the heck it was. Um, so, that's good, now, um, is that all right?
All, an email with all the dates.
Sure.
And the, but the official setting of the election has to be a vote, a future vote of the board, but that's kind of our spitballing it right now.
And we normally do that also in December, I think?
Yes.
Yes, it'll be coming up quite soon.
So when we set the warrant, maybe the night that we, if you can remind me, the night that December second, eighth, we set the, opening the warrant, setting the election date, okay, thank you.
Six months away, Ms. Marr, that's six, seven, it's six months away.
Oh, I, Ms. Marr and Ms. De Francisco, they've, they've got me on alert and everything, I'm using them and abusing them, it's terrible. Okay, we now move to correspondence received, Marathon Street, concerns, is there a motion? Move receipt, and any action by Mr. Helmut? Is there a, a second?
Second.
By Mr. Diggins? Any further discussion? If not, on a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mrs. Diggins, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed, unanimous vote. I got ten fifteen, so we're doing okay. Uh, new business, Ms. Marr?
No new business, thank you, Mrs. Marr.
Attorney Cunningham.
No new business, thank you.
I've also abused the past ten days, but I do appreciate it. Mr. Feeney?
No new business, thank you.
You're Mr. De Corsi.
No new business.
Mr. Diggins, my vice chair.
I do have new business, you know, so, um, so just recently, the Boston Regional MPO has released its Unified Planning Work Program. Uh, as you all know, the feds mean are, um, are a bit of an issue, um, with respect to, um, executive orders being, and, and the things that they are wanting, you know, to be included, uh, in, um, the Unified Planning Work Program being, and so, uh, already the, um, MPO and the Massachusetts, uh, are, the, the planning council being, has, um, they are filing a suit, you know, for an executive order that requires ICE to be involved, you know, uh, and I, I don't have the details exactly, you know, but, I mean, essentially it involves the Safe Streets for All Program, being, and so, uh, we aren't planning on getting those funds, you know, but, uh, I would ask that the board members take a look at the draft policy, and there's an executive order, you know, related to the Community Transportation, um, Access Program, you know, page three, um, dash twenty-eight, um, and there's an executive order there that I personally have issues with, you know, uh, and, and I want the board to really start thinking about how we want to approach, you know, these kinds of executive orders, you know, that may have bearing on projects, you know, that we might apply for, because, you know, I think we should think about, you know, what is it that the feds would want us to do that is across the line, you know, that we would say, no, we're not gonna do that, you know, and so, the, the MPO is already making some decisions on its own, and like I said, they are, are filing suit, you know, but I think we should think about that ourselves, you know, I, uh, I will very likely write a letter about this, you know, I'm not gonna ask the board to write a letter, you know, but I would say if anyone is inclined to write a letter, because they're taking comments on this UKWP, uh, feel free, of course, uh, to do so, but I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention because, um, it, it really is a big deal, you know, and so, I mean, this executive order, you know, says things like, you know, uh, we should be, recognize, you know, that the previous research involving climate, you know, is not valid, you know, and so, so, it, it is things that are making us say, you know, the opposite of what we know to be true, you know, and, and they are also trying to diminish, you know, or remove language regarding climate irresiliency, you know, certainly they are against anything having to do with DEI, you know, and those of us who know about transportation issues know that, I mean, a lot of the problems that we have with transportation, you know, access, you know, goes back to, you know, equity issues, you know, and so, so, um, uh, so it's, like I said, it's, it's a big deal, and we should just think about it and think about where the line is, you know, and as I said, if you want to make comments on it, you're of course welcome to do so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
No new business.
Mr. Helmut?
No new business.
And, um, Ms. Marr will let the town clerk know of the date that we set for the election because she asked.
They're going to tend to the D E S.
And then you'll, um, I'm charging you with the, um, housing overlay to get something on the town website tomorrow with date, things are due by, and I guess attaching the warrant article language, whatever, if we can get that up. And then, um, when we discuss our goals, I don't know, we might talk about Open Gov applications, of which, if the town, the select board would have twenty-three different features, functions it could use on that. And then I did, as we all saw, that Anna Litten, the library director, has now restored the last of the hours on Thursday that the library over the years that predated her directorship, that it was closed, weekend hours, Thursday hours, as well as she changed the hours for the children's room to make it more accommodating, so I did send her an email and CC the town manager on behalf of myself and the board, you know, thanking her for that, um, and said the community owns, owes you a great debt, and they'll repay it back over and over again by coming to the library for all these new hours that are open. And then, as we move forward, and we may discuss it at goals, or we may discuss it at a September meeting, but tonight the Cambridge City Council, um, is taking a vote presented by three of the city councilors to send a letter to, um, the MWRA and Governor Healy, uh, requesting that the MBTA parking garage project in Cambridge not be allowed to hook up, um, any sewer, uh, CSO discharges into the Alwick Brook, as well as the Somerville City Council and the mayor, um, took a vote and passed a motion, and they're directing their DPW director to, uh, come up with some solution or solutions on their one CSO, uh, CAM four oh three, whatever it is, and he has come up with something that, um, it isn't gonna be a, a heavy burden on low-income, uh, ratepayers in Somerville, so Kristen Anderson and Jean Benson and, and Dave White and George Lake and David Stoff, um, all their hard work is really paying off on that, um, because we're gonna be in a better position than we were before, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn by.
So moved.
Mr. Hurd, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. De Corsi, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed, unanimous vote, thank you, everybody.